Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Lynn School Committee meeting. This is a committee of the whole meeting. I'd like to call it a order. Roll call, please.
Here we go, everybody. Thank you.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gately?
Present.
Member Penya?
Present.
Member Reed?
Present.
Member Sadaway? Mayor Nicholson?
Present. All right. First item on our agenda is a presentation and recognition of our winners of the elementary basketball tournament. We are so excited to have you here and have this opportunity to recognize you and so proud of the way you... You guys can't hear me, is that... All right. One I'm gonna use without the mic?
Yeah.
That better? All right. We are so proud to have the winners of the elementary basketball tournament here this evening, and we're gonna present these citations to the team. But I wanna let you know what this citation says. It's from the entire Lynn School Committee. And it says that "The Lynn School Committee hereby extends with great pride and appreciation its most sincere congratulations to Sisson Elementary School Sisson Eagles." In recognition of the Sisson Eagles winning the girls' Division I elementary basketball tournament. The mayor and members of the Lynn School Committee are honored to recognize your outstanding accomplishment and respectfully offer our warmest encouragement and best wishes for the school's continued success. It's signed by myself and my colleagues here on the committee, and we would like to call up the Sisson girls and Coach Giulia Champini.
Come on down.
Watch out for the wires.
City champs.
Hold on, don't smile yet. We got some more people coming. You guys have more in here. Yomani, smile.
Hold on, everybody. Hold on. Looking this way. Everybody, big smiles. Excellent, excellent. Thank you very much. All right. Congratulations, Sisson Eagles. And next, we would like to congratulate and recognize, in recognition of winning the girls' Division II elementary basketball tournament, the Callahan Eagles. And Coach Maria De Scipio, if you could come on up, please.
Coach, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Make sure we can see our faces. Everybody, look at me. I need to see our faces. If we look at this way, perfect, perfect. Excellent, excellent. Congratulations again to the Division II girls' champs, Callahan Eagles. Next, we have, in recognition of winning the boys' Division II elementary basketball tournament, the Ford Falcons. And Coach Flexico. Congratulations, guys. Congratulations. Look at right there, everybody. Look at right here. Right in, right into my... Look at right here. Excellent, excellent. All right. Next, we have the Division III girls' winners. With Coach Bob Conlon, the Lynn Woods Wolves.
Congratulations, congratulations. Come on up. Come on up.
Thank you very much.
Coach, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. He's standing in the back here. I'm too tall. Will you hold that? Thank you.
Look at right there. Look around at my lights. Yep. Excellent. All right. And finally, our Division III boys' winners. The Lincoln Thompson Tigers. With Coach Jessica Bill.
Coach, congratulations.
Yeah, here you go. Congratulations.
Look at this way.
Thank you.
I also want to recognize, one of the teams was not able to be here, but they were the Division I Boys Champions, which deserves a round of applause, Coach Keela Brown and the Harrington Hornets. And then I want to just recognize, for all his hard work and dedication in organizing the tournament, Sean Morris. All right. We're gonna take a quick second to reset here, because we have some more recognitions coming up. I know it's a school night, so the basketball teams are welcome to get back to their studies. And then we're gonna, in a minute, get on to the Lobner Awards. So, all right. Thank you so much. Thank you, guys. We're gonna move on with the program, so if folks are staying, please find a seat. And if you are looking to exit, now's the time to do that, because we are going to resume. So the next item we have is... You can't hear me? All right. I can do it. Yeah. All right. I'll go back up here.
This mic's real hot.
All right. How's this? Oh, great, great. I was just saying, we're about to resume, and thank you all so much for helping us celebrate our elementary basketball winners. Congratulations again. And that brings us to the next item on our agenda, an annual tradition that we're very proud of here in the Lynn Public Schools, the Lobner Awards. And to present the Lobner Awards, I'd like to introduce Jack Greeley from the Lynn Business Education Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going... The Lynn Business Education Foundation has been proud to sponsor the George Lobner Awards for many years. George Lobner was the superintendent of schools in Lynn for many years, and the awards go to the best readers among the bunch of the Lynn schools, and probably the best readers maybe on the face of the earth. And it's fun to watch the kids when they receive their awards and to watch the parents see how proud they are. I'd like to introduce John Lobner, who is the brother of George Lobner, for whom the award is named.
No, I'm just saying I'm old, and move along.
All right. Excuse me, I have a cold, so anyway, the first award for the Aborn School is Christian Thomas Mendez.
Congratulations. Who's this? Oh, he's gonna be another staller. Who's this? Oh, well, you'll be another one. Congratulations for your brother. This is your award.
The next award goes to Valentino Rodriguez Montero from the Bricket School. The next award goes to Amelia Mahia from the Callahan School. The next award goes to Thara Etienne from Carbit School.
We'll get it to her if she's not here, and let her know.
The next award is to Alexa Champagne from the Connery School. The next award is to Tassin Mahmoud from Druids School. Tassin Mahmoud. The next award is to Kelsey Iv from the Fallon School. The next award is to Laura Lane Merida from the Ford School. The next award is to Laura Lane Merida from Ford School. Excuse me. Sorry. Adara Brown from Harrington School. The next award is to Yanelys Maldonado de Leon from Hood School. Next award is Stanley Petit Frere from Ingles School. Probably all in the library reading some more. The next award is to Benjamin Nargel from Lincoln Thompson School. The next award is to Brody Dumis from Lynn Woods School. The next award is to Chloe Louizna from Sewell Anderson School. The next award is to Aubrey Taylor from Shoemaker School. Next award is Namira Islam from Sisson School. The next award is to Esther Chavez from Tracy School. The next award is to Arlen Esteben Mendez from the Washington School. The next award is to Nirikaya Mayuk from Breed School. The next award is to Sami Bamaka Poljoy from Marshall School. Another one in the library. The next one award goes to Natalie Merida from Pickering School. The next award is to Alana Gordon from LVTI Discovery Program. The next, the final award goes to Noel De Roche from Fecto Leary School. That's the end of the awards. George? John, you wanna have anything? You wanna say anything? Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations again to all the recipients. Thank you so much to the Lynn Business Education Foundation and all those who helped us honor the memory of George Lobner, and above all, to all the students and their family and educators. Congratulations. And if one of the principals is here for the students that were absent, they can take the awards. Yeah. So, thank you. What? Great, great. Thank you so much, everybody. So, the next item here is open mic, and again, everyone's welcome to stay, but if you are here for the awards and wanna take this opportunity, you may do so.
I'd like to call the Curriculum Subcommittee to Order. Roll call, please.
Member Sadaway?
Present.
Is number Dugan?
Present.
Number Gately?
Present. So, on this agenda, the first item is... So, on this agenda, the first item is adopt of the Open Science Ed for grades three to five for school year 26. Any questions? Any motions?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Open Sci Ed for grades three through five for school year 26.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Number Sadaway?
Yes.
Number Dugan?
Yes.
Number Gately?
Yes. Next on the agenda is the adoption of Investigating History for grades five through seven for school year 26. Any questions? Motions?
Sure. Make a motion to adopt Investigating History for grades five to seven for school year 26.
Okay, I'll second that.
Number Sadaway?
Yes.
Number Dugan?
Yes.
Number Gately?
Yes. And I'd like to move them both up to the Committee of the Hall.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Number Sadaway?
Yes.
Number Dugan?
Yes.
Number Gately?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Open mic? Ready? All right, now we're going to move into the open mic session. The open mic session is designed to provide an opportunity to the citizens of Lynn to express their views on matters of concern to the school committee. The sessions are not designed to encourage debate or lengthy exchange of views, but to have the committee understand numerous points of view. The committee would appreciate speakers keeping their presentation to three minutes in order to accommodate as many people as time permits. The chair reserves a right to limit the number of speakers on the same topic to three. All speakers must be residents of the City of Lynn and be at least eighteen years of age. All right, first item is, we have a sign up here that we'll start with. Zach Johnson from Classical High School.
Good evening. Good evening, Lynn School Committee. During my twenty-three years here at Lynn Public Schools and during my time here as a student, I've had the privilege of working with some amazing educators. Tonight, I'm here to lend my support to one of the finest history teachers in the district, Ms. Aino Atianen. Ms. A, as she is affectionately called by her students, immigrated to the United States and is currently here on a work visa sponsored by Lynn Public Schools. So, over the last twelve years, I've been the Source Studies Department Head at Lynn Classical and have had the privilege of coaching and developing many new teachers. Of all of these, Ms. A truly stands out. This year alone, she's been nominated for both the NCSS Massachusetts History Teacher of the Year Award and for the National History Teacher of the Year Award through the Gilder Lerman Institute of American History. Despite this, and the myriad of amazing things she has done for the district, Lynn Public Schools has chosen not to extend her work visa. So, in February of 2026, Ms. A's work visa will expire and she will be forced to, number one, leave her students, number two, leave her class of 2026 where she's been the class advisor since their freshman year, right in the midst of them planning for their prom, their graduation. She's going to have to fully uproot her life and move back to Finland. I'm here tonight to request that Lynn Public Schools honor the commitment and dedication that Ms. A has shown to the students of Lynn by continuing to support her work visa. I would like to see the rest of my time and introduce Ms. Aino Atianen.
Next up, we have Aino Atianen. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello and good evening. My name is Aino Atianen, or as my students and colleagues at Lynn Classical know me, Ms. A. And I have been a US One History Teacher at Lynn Classical since January of 2021. On November eighteenth, 2024, I received a letter from the Lynn Public Schools HR Department stating that a decision was made, and I quote from the letter, "to not sponsor H1B visas any longer for employment purposes moving forward." I'm here today because the district has made the decision to not renew my H1B visa when it expires in February of 2026. During my time at Lynn Classical, I have been part of numerous committees and curriculum teams. I spearheaded the updating of the US One History Curriculum for multilingual learners using the Three Reads Protocol and writing each one of the instructional texts myself with my colleagues. I have been the US One PLC for two years and facilitated our team meetings. I'm also the class advisor of class of 2026. I have presented at the National Conference for Social Studies in Nashville on multilingual learner resources for social studies. I have found myself at home here at Lynn Classical. I have created incredible friendships and professional opportunities in addition to creating personal connections with my wonderful students. The reason why I'm here in front of you tonight is that I want to keep working at LCHS and keep building those connections with my students. During my time here, I have grown immensely as an educator and simultaneously helped countless students. Myself, my department head, and my principal have all expressed interest in extending my current H1B work visa for another three-year period. In October, I contacted the HR Department to begin the process. A month later, I received a letter I quoted above stating, again, I quote, "After careful consideration, we have made the difficult decision to not sponsor H1B visas any longer for employment purposes moving forward." This letter is the only communication I have received from Lynn Public Schools about their decision to not renew my visa. In contrast to other information that has been messaged out, I was not provided with the list of things to do or steps to take in order to keep my status at LPS. Furthermore, not at any point have my department head or my principal received any communication in regards to how I can keep my status at LPS, nor have any of us received any further explanation for the school administration's abrupt denial to extend my existing visa. We were left to ponder the reasons behind the decision, perplexed as to what sensible motivation there might be, especially in the middle of teacher shortage. Financially speaking, there is no logic to this decision. According to Veritix Education, hiring and onboarding a new teacher can cost anything between twelve to twenty-five thousand dollars in the state of Massachusetts. On the other hand, renewing an existing H1B visa for a company with more than twenty-five employees is around three thousand dollars without attorney fees and premium processing that will not be needed if there is sufficient time, which we still have around eight months. In addition, the Biden Administration streamlined the process of extending existing H1B work visas in 2024, making the process more straightforward and cost efficient. Last thing I want to say is, I am not going to stand here and pretend that my issues are the same as many of the other immigrant families in our district. I'm here to tell you that just as my students and their families, I came here for an opportunity. I left my family behind, I work hard, and every day I have been lifted by this community of other immigrants and kind-hearted educators. Every teacher, paraprofessional, school nurse, aide, family resource officer, hall monitor, and all the other student-facing staff worked day in and day out to be there for our students and their families, especially in these times of extreme uncertainty. All I am asking is that you will be there for us as well. Be worthy of your mission statement and show us that your actions match your words. As the Lynn Public School website states, that we, LPS, are committed to hiring educators that represent diversity of race, color, sexual orientation, national origin, disability status, religion, and gender. Candidates from diverse backgrounds with experience in an urban setting are encouraged to apply. Be worthy of your mission statements and show us that your actions match your words. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Next, we have Amanda Hughes. Just leave your name and address.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
My name is Amanda Hughes and I live at 258 Lynfield Street here in Lynn. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Superintendent Alvarez, and other distinguished members of the school committee. I'm the senior class president at Classical High School and I've come to talk to you about an incredibly important topic. I remember my first day at Lynn Classical as a freshman, sitting in Ms. A's class. One of the things that sticks out the most to me is how welcome and comfortable I felt in her class that day and every day after that. Ms. A is one of the most impactful teachers I've had during my time as a Lynn Public School student. Every lesson was thoughtfully planned out with an engaging activity or project that filled me with a long-lasting understanding of the content. I recall being very overwhelmed about an assignment in her class. She assured me that it would be okay, then proceeded to assist me and ensured my understanding of the topic. This is an experience that has stuck with me and I've always admired Ms. A for the kindness with which she treats all of her students. As an immigrant herself, Ms. A serves as a role model and inspiration for the many immigrant students who attend Lynn Classical. Her absence would rob those students of an experience that LPS claims to provide. Denying her place here would directly go against the core values of Lynn Public Schools, embracing diversity and providing spaces of belonging for all. How could this district turn its back on her? Throughout her time here, she has become an integral and irreplaceable part of the Lynn Classical community. She never fails to show up for her students, whether it be for her student council as a class advisor or as a fan at a sporting event. Ms. A is a one-of-a-kind teacher who is consistently prepared and engaged. The loss of her would be an extreme disservice to the students of Lynn Public Schools, the students that you serve. I implore you to do right by these students and reconsider your approach to renew Ms. A's visa. I put together a petition that has been signed so far by over two-hundred-and-eighty parents, students, and teachers showing their outrage at this decision and their support for Ms. A. She deserves her position and students deserve to have a teacher with the passion and dedication that she brings to the classroom. To consider losing a teacher of Ms. A's caliber over money and not a lot of money is a terrible injustice to the population you serve. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Phil McQueen.
Good evening. Phil McQueen, Lynn Classical ELA Department Head. I had the privilege last week of going to AP Day at the State House and I saw Mr. Reed wearing his other hat and along with Mr. Crichton, and they were very, very welcoming to the group of students that came to AP Day. They really got to see how government works at a local level. So, that was a great opportunity for them. But the thing I really took away from that day was how every single representative that we met with said, "The most interesting thing, the best thing that you can tell us are your stories, are your narratives, to put a face to an issue." So, that's what I want to do now. My story is one that I don't really share that often, but this is a story of an immigrant to the United States twenty-eight years ago. That immigrant was me. I came to America looking for a job and I got quite a lot of job offers. There was one district that would actually sponsor me, and that was the Lynn Public Schools. They sponsored me, they sponsored my H1B visa, and here I am, twenty-eight years later. I've been in a number of roles over the course of my career in this district. I started out as an ESL teacher at Marshall Middle School because there was a shortage. That's why there is an H1B visa program, right? I moved on to a number of different roles. I'm now a department chair at Lynn Classical. I've done work with the union and I was a national trainer for the union. None of that would have happened if Lynn Public Schools hadn't signed off on my visa application. I think back to the time now, and it's really poignant in the fact that if Lynn Public Schools hadn't signed off on my H1B visa, my life would be drastically different. I can't even imagine what it would be like. And the lives of the students that I've impacted over the many years I've been working in LPS would also be very different. So, I'm just imploring you to afford, I know, the same privileges, the same courtesy that I was afforded all those years ago. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Amelia Stark.
Hello and good evening. My name is Amelia Stank. I live at forty Copeland Road and thirty-six Cumberland Circle, and I am currently a junior at Lynn Classical High School. I am involved in a wide variety of activities, including newspaper, social justice, dance, and student council. As vice president of the student council, most of my responsibilities involve fundraising and event planning as we prepare for our senior year. We also work to keep our classmates informed and engaged with what is happening in our school community. One of the reasons that I am here tonight, along with several others, is to advocate for our class advisor and beloved history teacher, Aino Atianen, better known to most of us as Ms. A. Ms. A has been a dedicated advisor since our freshman year. She keeps us focused during meetings, even when we veer off topic, and she's guided us through countless events and fundraisers with patience and heart. As a freshman history teacher, she brought creativity and energy to every lesson. I can honestly say that I was never bored in her class. My brother will be a freshman at Classical next year, and I really hope that he has her as a history teacher. One moment that has stayed with me was when I learned in freshman year during December break that Ms. A's work visa had expired and she was back in Finland. Even then, despite dealing with time differences and trying to resolve her visa situation, she continued to provide in grade work asynchronously without pay. That kind of dedication is rare. When I found out this year that Ms. A's visa would not be renewed, I was shocked. How could someone who was so intelligent, hardworking, and focused on her students be told she can no longer teach at our school? I understand that there are many complexities and challenges facing our education system today, but I also know this, the United States is facing a well-documented teacher shortage. Choosing not to renew Ms. A's visa means losing a licensed, committed, and experienced educator, someone who is already a vital part of our school community. It also means taking on the higher cost of recruiting and onboarding a new teacher rather than supporting someone who has already proven her value. I respectfully urge you to reconsider this decision. Ms. A is not just our advisor, she is an educator, a mentor, and a trusted adult at Lynn Classical. Our school is stronger with her in it. I would also like to read an excerpt from something my friend, Darness Martinez, wrote as she could not be here tonight. Ms. A is the most understanding and loving teacher I have ever known. Although she is tough on her students, she makes sure everyone understands what she is teaching. She can teach you an entire lesson just by looking at a picture. She is one of the few teachers I have truly learned from. She always helps me when I need her the most and never made me feel ashamed. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Next is Christopher Stank. Just leave your name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the school committee. I'm Christopher Stank of thirty-six Cumberland Circle. I'm here as a parent of a classical student. I don't want to rehash what you've already heard from Ms. A, from the teachers and the students, one of them being my daughter, because they can better articulate the facts of Ms. A. As a parent, I look and I see that tonight started off with an award ceremony for basketball, for an award ceremony for the Lobner Awards. Yet, here we are, tonight, looking at what I view as a sad situation where we're having to stand here, speak on Ms. A's behalf because her work visa is not being renewed. She's been there for the students the last three years while my daughter has been at Classical. She's been her social studies teacher, she's been the class advisor for three years. As a parent, I continually will see Ms. A there in front of the students, helping them, guiding them, shaping what they do, leading them, teaching them, as an advisor. So, when I'm in the So, when I'm in the IT field, and when I look at, is it cheaper to hire a new person or cover the costs to maintain someone? Every single time, it is better to maintain the person because you have continuity. Continuity for all those students that are going into their senior year is, was highlighted, and Ms. A. and Mr. Conlon have been their advisors. I sat here with the Classical students and the teachers prior to this meeting, and Ms. A. is sitting there, talking to the students about what and how to help them, even if she's not here next year to help them in their senior year, setting them up for the remainder of this year so they can be planning for next year. I call that dedication of a teacher. You have students that are supporting Ms. A., you have multiple of them here. When, they could be other events, such as an inclusivity summit that is happening in the city. I myself had to choose between coming here to support Ms. A. or being at my son's school for a school event. I chose to be here because Ms. A. means so much to those kids at Classical. In closing, I continue to expect clear and open communications from Lynn Public Schools and the City of Lynn. What I heard tonight is, does not appear to be that way. I hold myself to being accountable, to being held to a higher standard, and I would expect the same from the school committee and the administration.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Megan Levitt. Say your name and address.
Good evening, members of the school committee, superintendent, and fellow community members. My name is Megan Levitt, and I am a lifelong Lynn resident, LPS alumni, and a special education teacher at Fallon Elementary School. I have proudly served in Lynn Public Schools for the past five years, all of which I have spent at Fallon. Fallon is a sub-separate therapeutic elementary school dedicated to providing intensive academic and emotional support to students with significant social-emotional needs. We serve some of the most vulnerable children in the district, students who cannot access learning in a traditional setting without targeted, trauma-informed, and therapeutic support. Our team doesn't just teach academics, we teach regulation, trust, and safety. I'm here tonight to express concern about the proposed cuts to our social-emotional learning department, particularly the changes they bring to the two clinical supervisors we have at Fallon. While our school will retain one clinical supervisor position, the other position, which is currently held by Lexi Preval, will be moved into a clinician role. In a therapeutic school like Fallon, where trust and consistency are essential to student progress, losing a supervisor who has built strong relationships and understands the culture of our program will be deeply disruptive. This isn't just a staffing change, it's a loss of consistency and stability for students who depend on these very things to feel safe and succeed. Losing a trusted supervisor in this setting undermines the clinical foundation that helps our students regulate, relate, and recover. It is not a change they can easily absorb. Lexi has been my clinical supervisor for the past two years. Her guidance has been essential to both my professional growth and my ability to support my students effectively. She is deeply knowledgeable, trauma-informed, and incredibly responsive to the needs of students, staff, and families. Her support helps keep students in school, in district, and connected to a consistent team of trusted adults. When students are not able to get the clinical and emotional support they need in district, the result is often an increase in out-of-district placements. Not only is this more destabilizing for students and families, but is also significantly more costly to the district in the long term. While I'm speaking from my experience at Fallon and specifically about Lexi, I recognize that these cuts will affect many schools. I can't speak to those other schools personally, but I know every role being considered for elimination serves a vital purpose. Cutting these positions will spread those remaining far too thin. These staff members are not optional, they are essential, and they deserve to stay. I urge you to consider the long-term impact of these cuts. We cannot support healing, growth, and learning if we remove the very people who make those things possible. Thank you for your time and your commitment to the students of Lynn Public Schools.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Sarah Fox Ray.
Hi, everybody. My name is Sarah Fox Ray. I'm a clinical supervisor and an active community member. I'm a Lynn Public Schools parent, and I'm also a voter. My entire career has been dedicated to the youth in this city. My husband is a public servant in Lynn, and I grew up in Lynn. For 15 years, I've been working as a clinician in the therapeutic setting, from pre-K, elementary, middle school, high school, and postgraduate. Seen it all. When we had less staff, I was heartbroken when unable to provide consistent support to students, whether it was a sick child with cancer, to a child coming back from intensive mental health treatment, to a child with severe school phobia and more. In three years of rolling out this model, our staffing grew. And as it did, so did the need, and so did the students that were getting serviced. During this time, suspension laws changed, and the need to provide alternative remedies when students got in trouble became a huge part of our role with our partnership and administrators, which is essential in helping to get to the root of what is making a student struggle with behavioral issues. It's also essential in reducing suspension rates. The proposed cuts, excuse me, include multiple bilingual staff, which is a necessity in this district. The proposed cuts also include supervisors in large schools, therapeutic settings, as was just explained, and close-knit school communities. It can take years to recreate these kind of relationships. It's taken me years to build the relationships I have at Tech, and I've been in this district for a long time. To rebuild these structures and these relationships may not even happen at all. It's a unique fit. It isn't just a shifting of personnel, it's a loss of talented, very talented clinicians and relationships that save lives. In our work, I think I speak for most clinicians when I say that our biggest fear is losing a student. Universally screening students for mental health issues and having the staff to respond to those students' needs is the next step in the growth of this department, which is incredibly green. So we are still growing, we're in beginning phases, and we are reaching more and more students. And when we do those screenings, we have to respond to the students' needs. When you cut 13 dedicated humans, that response is reduced. This reduction in force creates an environment for a student thinking about hurting themselves, where they may not know who to go to to get the support. When 13 less, with 13 less staff, it creates a school community where we respond to crisis and behaviors, but we can't implement the best practices in tier-one and tier-two supports, like consistent family communications, parent groups, push-in lessons in every class, teacher support, visibility, and the trusting relationships that are needed. I understand wholeheartedly that difficult decisions have to be made, but these 13 cuts, they're too deep, and I'm terrified, I'm really scared of the consequences, to be honest. Clinicians save lives, they prevent abuse, we change life paths, we help with grief, and we help students access learning. To the people voting on this budget with children of your own, and as a parent myself, do you want your children to not have someone to go to when they're crying? And do you want them to have access to the things that you can find in other communities, where there is universal skill-building around how to manage stress, how to be a good friend, someone there when they're in the darkest moment? Communication with parents, this cannot all fall on a teacher, and when you have a full clinical staff, we are able to manage those layers of the work. I beg you to reconsider these deep cuts.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Heather Matulowicz. Say your name and address.
Good evening, distinguished members of the school committee. I am a proud clinical supervisor with over 20 years of school counseling experience. I have treasured my four years with the Lynn Public Schools. First off, I have tremendous respect for anyone who gives their time to serve on the school committee. I would never be able to sit in the superintendent's position to propose a budget of this magnitude. And I've seen firsthand how serving on the school committee is often a thankless job with an enormous amount of responsibility to serve the many competing needs of the school community. A budget is a very real construct with a finite capacity and seemingly impossible elements to fulfill. I respect the enormity of this process, and thank you for working to attempt to satisfy so many needs, and also to listen to my plea for the provision of mental health support for our students and families. Beyond numbers and subjectively-aligned data, we are discussing eliminating human beings who have figured out how to navigate a complex school community, irreplaceable bilingual community members and skilled clinicians whose loss will leave a burden too heavy to bear. If I say, if we say we're about SEL, and it is my faith and understanding that many with the power to affect the budget are, we must put the structures and systems that support that into place. Not everything about a budget is clear, it's complicated, but there are some things that are black and white. If you diminish resources dedicated to student-facing needs, you take away opportunities for students to get to school every day, to feel seen, heard, and safe, to develop meaningful connections and community that we preach from afar. You are responsible for how you vote. Approving a reduction of force is letting the students know exactly how you feel about them. You're asking people to stretch too thin and get by on too little while still maintaining lofty goals and aspirations. We cannot lean on the safety net of a 250-to-1 ratio. That is simply a data point to justify that the clinical support provided to students is enough, when there are a number of additional factors that debunk this justification, to include the amount of special education support rightfully provided to every student in our buildings who qualify. The adverse childhood events the students in our community are facing, especially now, do not fit into the criteria of 250-to-1, far from it. To say otherwise is a decided effort to turn a blind eye. Counselors have innumerable tasks to complete to make sure that we're in compliance, and behind every box to check are countless hours of face-to-face connection, collaboration, circling back with collaterals, and meeting people where they are to establish understanding and trust. We cannot always move as swiftly and decisively as one can in negotiations and business decisions. We can't take a stack of paper and move it to the side of our desk and say it will be there tomorrow, because the child looking for you at the end of the day, when you have a deli line of students clamoring for your attention, is not something that can be moved to the side. We are asking for counselors to be an adult catch-all safety net for our children, and then we're asking us to do it with less. There's only one way to analyze that data point: less opportunity to share information, sometimes lifesaving information with a trusted adult. We're telling kids to turn to trusted adults, but then we limit their access. There is no other way to slice that data. There's no better way to paint a prettier picture, to lean on a nationally-recognized ratio. It's just not the case, so let's not fool ourselves into thinking that it is. Your vote speaks to the entire community about how you feel about the safety and belonging of the children of the Lynn Public Schools. This is an election year, and many people are speaking on the promises of their campaign. It will be very clear who is and isn't aligned with the authenticity of the message. It comes simply down to what you accept and that, and what you acknowledge, that we could and should do better for our kids. Counselors are the ones who lay up at night because they may not have been able to get everything done during school days, and it's almost like we're goalies responsible for not letting in a shot in the net. The fact of the matter is, we cannot hold it all when the deliberate decision on the part of the administration and school committee to endorse a reduction of force is on the table and up for public discussion. Please do not remove our pivotal players. No one in the current clinical roles is sitting around with extra time on their hands. Most are not making time for lunch to try to meet the daily demands of our deserving students. Endorsing a RIF is advancing the negative momentum of our support infrastructure, plain and simple. If you're not for increased mental health, you're against it. Please let your vote speak loud and clear and let it be remembered. I've worked for districts where we've been stretched way too thin and ran around trying to do the best we could with the resources we had with an enormous student caseload. Administration failed to give us the resources or budget that was needed for the work demand, but what was the alternative? Of course, the kids' needs far outweighed the frustration and exhaustion. We would do anything to make sure their needs were met to the absolute best of our ability. I would share with these colleagues about how Lynn did it differently. I was so happy and so proud that Lynn invested in a robust clinical staff. I've been so energized by the outcomes of the school-community initiatives to focus on belonging and attendance that we've been able to provide every day. Now clinical staff will be stretched too thin, a reduction of supports to therapeutic schools feels insidious. And what we, and when we fail our most vulnerable students, we will have nowhere to turn but to look to meeting needs outside of our own district. Our most vulnerable students will lose cultivated relationships we've planted, nurtured, and fostered through the years. Children will lose their trusted adults, the single strongest data-driven factor of student resilience. Isn't it clear? There are acute mental health situations that will have tragic implications regardless of staffing. But we are decidedly exacerbating this by this deep of a cut, and the choice is in your hands. Please change the trajectory of this RIF. We trust you with the livelihood of our students.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Sheila O'Neill. Say your name and address.
This is my final open mic as president of the Lynn Teachers Union. So Sheila O'Neill, President of Lynn Teachers Union, 200 Locust Street. Good evening. First, I would like to clarify for the record that the Lynn Teachers Union is not opposed to the City Arts and Science Academy, CASA. The Lynn Teachers Union has concerns regarding the timeline and costs for renovating the Fecto Larry Building. The union's only concern is for the safety and well-being of our students and staff. CASA is not the only location. We have FDCA moving to Eastern Bank location on Market Street, and preschools moving from Bessemer Street to Bennett Street, where classrooms will be built on the second floor, recently vacated by LPS administration. Based on construction delays across the country and here in Lynn for our Pondview location, we want to ensure that there is a plan in place for students and staff assigned to move into buildings being renovated this summer, in case the spaces are not ready for students by September 3rd. That is what we are worried about, and that is what we're advocating for: a plan that is transparent. Additionally, I would like to note that the FY '26 budget cuts impact teachers and students significantly. We have 37, or 44, it's changing because the pages have been changed, but 37 teaching positions being cut at the cost of $3,239,276. Fifteen out of those 37 positions cut are English-language learner educators. And 12 teaching positions were cut at the secondary level. With 12 secondary teaching positions cut, students may experience more crowded classrooms, they will experience more crowded classrooms. They will have reduced opportunities for personalized instruction and increase the likelihood of students falling behind. The reduction in ELD positions may disproportionately affect students who are English learners, potentially widening the achievement gap. Educators' workload will be impacted with increased responsibilities and larger class sizes. Overworking your staff leads to burnout and decreased job satisfaction, which leads to retention problems. These cuts are valued at $4,186,414. The loss of direct service providers for our students is extremely concerning. The long-term educational and social costs, such as lower student achievement or decreased, increased dropout rates, will outweigh these savings significantly.
Thank you so much. Next is Dottie Brown.
Good evening. My name is Dottie Brown, and I live at Flynn Street in Lynn. And I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak before the school committee. First, I have to apologize, I am not a public speaker in any way, shape, or form, so this is way out of my comfort zone. But, during the last school committee meeting, at approximately 1 hour, 7 minutes, and 13 seconds, a hot mic captured a comment. The comment was, "They are looking at us like," we're going to drop the "uh" word because we don't say those words, "makes you want to flip the table." This comment, regardless of the speaker's intent or volume, was clearly audible in the public recording. As a parent of a child with an i- As a parent of a child with an IEP, I find this not only deeply offensive but contrary to the inclusive values that this school system claims to uphold. So, my request is simple. Will the individual who made this remark take responsibility and address their actions? We teach our children to take ownership of their behavior. I am asking that we, as adults and community leaders, model the same accountability. If not, I would have to actually start to question the integrity of the board. While the new CASA school sounds promising, I must question why the creation of a new school required pulling support from existing high-performing programs. We already have programs in place that are transformative and progressive while allowing students to reach beyond the high school degree. Instead of expanding and investing in what already works, we appear to be creating, we appear to be creating something new while quietly disassembling the foundation beneath us. I was saddened to hear that Mr. Jeffrey Marshall speak at the last meeting about the discontinuation of support for the college courses at the academy. So to roughly quote Jeffrey, Mr. Jeffrey Marshall, "You have been asking the teachers and staff to do more with less, so we, as parents, are asking you to do the same as well. Thank you for your time, your service, and hearing not just my concerns, but the voice of some of the parents and students who want what's best for all of the Lynn children. I look forward to your response and the renewed commitment to equity transparency and bringing the Lynn Public School System back onto the road of excellence." Thank you.
Do you want to say something? Yeah, all right. So as part of the Lynn Public Schools, or Lynn School Committee policies on open mic, we do have a, part of that policy that says if a school committee member or member of the administration is addressed individually, that, that, that member may respond, and so, remember Penya.
Well, first of all, I just want to say, I apologize if I offended anyone with my remarks. You know, it's never appropriate to use inappropriate language, and I own up to that, you know? At the time, I was trying to manage a very frustrating situation, and I was having a difficult time. As someone who grew up with disabilities like myself, and I have children in the public school systems who do have IEPs and disabilities, trust me, my heart is not there. I was being defensive, I was frustrated. You know why? Someone who grew up with trauma and always defending myself, you know, because that's what I grew up with, I felt like that moment, I had to be like that, and I truly apologize. That's not where my heart is, you know? Trust me, we're all up here doing the best for our students. I like to advocate for our educators and our students, especially our most vulnerable students, like myself growing up. You know, I had to be very defensive my whole life. So I apologize if I was caught off-guard in one of my private moments with a colleague, and I wasn't addressing anybody, I was self-sabotaging myself, like I did a lot, a lot growing up. I'm human, I made a mistake, and I truly apologize about that. But trust me, I have children who have special needs right now getting services in public schools. I'll give my heart for those kids, and I have fight for those kids, and I truly apologize for that. Thank you.
Thank you, member Penya. That's the end of the signups. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at open mic? Great. You state your name and address, please.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Mariana Pagan, and I live at 253 Chestnut Street in Lynn, Massachusetts. Hi, everyone, again. Nice to see everyone. All right. As I said before, my name is Mariana Pagan, and I'm a proud soon-to-be graduate of Lynn English High School. I'm here tonight, not just as a student, but as an organizer with the Neighbor to Neighbor Youth Team, a group of young people who have been showing up to school committees since January, to make sure student voices are not only heard but respected and reflected in this district's decisions. We've stayed out, late on school nights, we've organized our classmates, written proposals, and spoken out, all while juggling homework, jobs, and personal responsibilities. So when we saw the proposed budget include $10,000 for Lynn English, $10,000 for Lynn Classical, and $5,000 for Lynn Vocational Technical Institute, it meant something. It showed that our months of organizing are making a real impact, and we thank you for recognizing that. But this process isn't over. There are two meetings left for the final vote, and we're here tonight to urge you strongly and sincerely to keep those investments in the final budget. We have students attending top 20 universities in the nation. Imagine what we could do with better, proper funding for exploring passions through extracurriculars, more clubs, better events, and stronger school spirit, where students who feel like they belong and they are seen. This funding is essential to create those opportunities and build stronger, more inclusive schools. We've shown up since, we've shown up since January, and we're watching how this final vote goes, and will continue showing up. Because this isn't about this year's budget, it's about building a culture of respect and investment in Lynn students. We're grateful for what has been proposed, but gratitude doesn't mean silence. We're still asking you to act and to confirm this funding and show students that showing up matters. Finally, we talk a lot about equity in this district, and this is a chance to practice that, not just preach it. Supporting all three high schools with real funding is an equity decision. It's about making sure every student has a chance to thrive, no matter what school they attend. So tonight, I'm asking you, the school committee, the mayor, the superintendent, please keep the $10,000 for Lynn English, the $10,000 for Lynn Classical, and the $5,000 for Lynn Tech in the final budget. Invest in students who are already investing in their schools and their city. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else for open mic? Yep, just state your name and address, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Fong Tran. I'm associated with the Neighbor to Neighbor Youth Committee. As I approached the end of my junior year at TEC, I found myself at a precarious predicament. Like many of my fellow juniors, a college admission is becoming a daunting prospect. Things we do now, in and out of classrooms, are pivotal and make or break our college applications. Yet with each passing day of dreading hitting submit button on the Common App, I cannot help but wonder if my achievements are enough. This begs the question, will the rest of my underclassmen and future generations of students feel the same? Working through this year as the head chairman of the NHS Academic Committee, I met some of the brightest minds in Lynn Tech. Each conversation lingering with doubt in the back of their throats, nevertheless their eyes radiate with nothing but a glimpse of hope, yearning to become someone exceptional. Having one-on-one conversations with people on the committee, they're the dream of going to top 20 schools, with their main motivator being financially at the top institutions. With the top 20, top 20 schools becoming more prestigious each year, it begs the question of how do we achieve the dreams of the thousands of other students competing for the same spot? How do we differentiate ourselves enough for other students to have a chance of consideration? Which brings me to my next point. With the recent budget allocations for the next year's extracurricular activities, new doors are open for students to explore opportunities and chances of finding new passions. However, the increases to the budget are not distributed equally among the schools. While Classical and English get a budget increase of $10,000 each, Tech has given half of their budget. This is inequitable, as our school population is not half of English in classicals, having 75% of their student body, yet we are being delegated half of what they are funded. Even if we got 25% of what Classical and English budget, it would make significant an impact towards the extracurricular culture at Tech, with more and more students becoming involved in community students, expanding their horizons, pushing themselves toward success. Will they be benefiting themselves but towards, benefiting the local community by hosting events such as food drives, making timeless connections with people? They wouldn't, they would have met otherwise. Consequently, additional funding towards new clubs, such as Math Club and Science Club, will allow bright minds in Tech to compete with other students and schools becoming pillar of not only academic prowess, but also an avenue of hope. With these clubs and opportunities becoming implemented in Tech's culture, future generations of students will be able to take advantage of these opportunities, allowing their ambitions to prosper, showing not only the intellect of a Lynn student, but also the tenacity of one. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Anyone else for open mic? Yep, go ahead. Name and address.
Hi, my name is Dania De La Cruz. I live on 6 Lincoln Street. I am a senior at Lynn English High School, I graduate in a week, and I've been a part of Neighbor to Neighbor for two years now. It is my honor to speak in front of you. I'm speaking on behalf of my friend who has an inclusivity summit today, she couldn't make it, and as one of the leaders, current leaders of Neighbor to Neighbor Youth Team, it is my, I am really excited to pass it on to the future leaders. So this is her speech. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lily Manquello, and I am about to complete my junior year at Lynn English High School, and I am a member of the Neighbor to Neighbor Youth Team. I am speaking here today after hearing word of the new budgeting for extracurriculars included in the recently-released budget. The $10,000 budgeted for Lynn English, the $10,000 for Lynn Classical, as well as the $5,000 for Lynn Tech, was cause for celebration. I was alone in my room, happy, dancing, when our youth coordinator, Gabe, told me the news. But I must assure you that I was not by myself that day. This is a cause for celebration for the entirety of the Neighbor to Neighbor Youth Team, a group comprised of three, three of these Lynn Public High Schools, as well as for many other students across the schools who have shared their struggles around extracurriculars with us. To hear of this line item affirm the entirety of the 2024 and 2025 school year for my teammates and me. I can instantly recall each and every Thursday night, my classmates said to speak in the Annex Building on behalf of the non-athletic extracurriculars in the Lynn Public Schools. I remember the informative meetings the team and I held with our school principals where we were given an avenue to express our concerns, and we were met with vital advice and insight. I hope that the school committee comprehends the significance of this funding to our, to the students whom you represent. In a city as large as our own, it is easy to become pigeonholed into focusing on your own school, your own responsibilities, your own needs. But allow the Neighbor to Neighbor Youth Team to be an example that we are all the Lynn Public Schools. We express our concerns and ideas for the same reason we all sit here today: to foster our school system. My classmates on the science team, who were ranked number one last year in the North Shore Science League, thank you. My friends and I on the inclusivity panel, who are preparing for our annual inclusivity summit, thank you. My dear friend in the art club, who was recently recognized for his talent at the City Hall during the Big Belly Barrel Contest, thank you. It is vital to recognize the significance of a club. This form of community stretches well beyond staying an hour after school or simply being another activity to bolster a college application. We need our extracurriculars because our city has talent, passion, drive that is far too dismissed in favor of negativity and disparagement. On behalf of Neighbor to Neighbor and on behalf of Lynn Public School students, I thank you for allowing us to speak and for hearing our advocacy. We hope you will continue to affirm our hard work by voting this funding, but, funding through in the final form of the budget. And as, as I said, I'm graduating in a week, and I've been a part of Neighbor, Neighbor to Neighbor for a while, and I have an interest in policy. I know that your job is very complicated, and you have to make sacrifices and decisions in order to make our, our public school system a lot better, but I urge you to understand that these clubs are more than just clubs, like Lily said, and that they're crucial to bettering our future and assuring the world of the promise that the Lynn Public School Systems have. I thank you so much for being here. Have a nice, just a good afternoon.
Thank you so much. Anyone else for open mic? Yep, just name and address.
Hi, everyone. My name is Gabe Cohen-Glynnick. I'm organizer with Neighbor to Neighbor. Just want to speak of some of the things behind the scenes that, you know, of our, our youth team over this past six months. Before, before even the budget process started, they put in hours and hours of work advocating for, not just for themselves, but for the, a lot of them are seniors, they won't even see the benefits that they've invested their time in to advocate for this because it's important to them. They're not paid for that time, they're not given any special, it's because it's important to them, it's because it's important to their, their school communities, and so I want to, it's been the honor of my career to support them in this, in this push, and I, and I hope you all respect that in voting through the, the additional funding in the budget for the line item for extracurriculars, and hopefully for slightly at least increasing the, the Lynn Tech allocation to make it more in line with the, the student body numbers. I also want to say, like, this, this is what democracy looks like. I know it's a hard job to sit up there and, and field all of the, like, but this is great. This is like, this is what it should look like, every, you know, students, teachers, family members, parents, like, like, thank you for, for hearing us, and also, like, this is important. This is, and I, and I hope you hear the comments that are made tonight from all, all different sides of people who really deeply care about their community. So thank you, and that's all.
Thank you so much. Anyone else for open mic? Anyone else for open mic? Last call for open mic, and we will close the open mic portion of the evening and move into the 10th regular meeting of the school committee. Yeah, and we'll take a quick break before we do that. I'd like to call to order, please, the 10th regular meeting of the school committee. Roll call, please.
Number Castellanos.
Present.
Number Dugan.
Present.
Number Dadeley.
Present.
Number Penya.
Present.
Number Reed.
Present.
Number Sadowite.
Present.
Mayor Nicholson.
Present, and I also would like to welcome our student representative, Jennifer Rodriguez-Lopez, from the Frederick Douglass Legion. Thank you so much. For those who are able, please join me and rise for a salute to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Next item is the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion to put Item C into new business as the next item on the agenda?
Yep, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Ayes have it. Item C is renaming Fecto Leary Junior Senior High School to the Harold Durgan Success Academy.
Do we want to take the minutes?
Half the plans here.
Half the plan's still pretty big.
Do it, coach.
That picture is out in front of the old Lynn Classical on graduation day.
Just two slides. Child, go back.
This one?
Back and forth.
All right, you could have done it from the back.
Oh, no.
No, that wasn't, it was one button, that's it.
Hello, everyone. I am here with the family of a very special person here from the Lynn community. This is the Durgan family. A little bit about Harold Hal Durgan. He was a lifelong educator and coach who devoted over 40 years to the Lynn Public Schools, profoundly shaping the lives of generations of students. Born into a family where neither parent graduated from high school, Hal came to understand from an early age the transformative power of education. His life became a testament to the belief that education is not only a path to success, but a powerful force for changing one's future regardless of where one begins. A proud graduate of Lynn Classical High School, class of 1953, Hal's formative experiences in the classroom sparked a desire to pursue teaching. He began his college journey at Wake Forest University and later transferred to Villanova University, where he played football and cultivated the leadership and discipline that would become hallmarks of his career. After graduating from Villanova in 1958, Hal returned to Lynn Classical High School, his alma mater, where he would teach and mentor for more than four decades. Hal's belief in second chances was grounded in his own life and the challenges he witnessed his students face. He held firm to the idea that no matter a person's background, with the right support and education, anyone could change their course. He went on to earn a master's degree in education from Salem State University, a reflection of his committee, commitment to lifelong learning and personal growth. This same belief performed the foundation of his teaching This same belief performed the foundation of his teaching philosophy, that every student, given the opportunity, had the potential to succeed. In addition to his work in the classroom, Hal was a passionate coach, guiding young athletes at Lynn Trade, now known as Lynn Vocational Technical Institute, and with the Lynn Lions. His coaching extended far beyond the field. He taught perseverance, teamwork, and self-belief, instilling life lessons that shaped his players' futures. For Hal, winning was secondary to character development. In recognition of his exceptional contributions to education and athletics, Hal was inducted in the Lynn Classical Hall of Fame, an honor that reflects the profound and lasting impact he made on the school community he so deeply loved. At home, Hal shared a deep partnership with his wife Helen, a fellow educator in the Lynn school system. Together, they raised six children, five of whom followed in their parents' footsteps, pursuing careers in education and coaching. Hal's belief in the power of education was not only passed on to his students, but lives in through his family. Hal Durgan's legacy is one of service, compassion, and conviction. He believed in the dignity and potential of every individual. As a teacher, coach, husband, and father, he left behind a powerful example that with dedication, heart, and education, lives can be transformed. It is our honor today to present to the school committee changing the Fecto Leary Alternative Education name to the Hal Durgan Success Academy.
I just wanted to say thank you. It's a real honor, and we are proud to say that his name will live on in the city. And it will be an honor to serve there as the principal, finishing up my career. So, thank you, everybody.
I'd like to make a motion.
A second.
Any discussion or questions? All right, roll call, please.
Number Castellanos.
Yes.
Number Dugan.
Yes.
Number Gaitley.
Yes.
Number Penya.
Yes.
Number Reed.
Yes.
Number Sadowite. Mayor Nicholson.
Yes. Thank you so much for the presentation and for joining us tonight as we bestow this well-deserved honor. Congratulations. All right, next item is the minutes.
Motion to accept the 9th regular meeting on May 8, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Ayes have it. Next, we have appointments.
Good evening. The first is Lisa Colvin White as the interim principal at Connery till the end of the school year. She was not able to be here tonight, but wanted to express her thanks.
Good luck. And congratulations.
The second appointment tonight is a school nurse election for Alex Alexis Peckrell, rule of the committee.
Is there a motion?
Motion to accept Alexis Peckrell as a school nurse.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Number Castellanos.
Alexis Peckrell.
Number Dugan.
Alexis Peckrell.
Number Gaitley.
Alexis Peckrell.
Number Penya.
Alexis Peckrell.
Number Reed.
Alexis Peckrell.
Number Sadowite.
Alexis Peckrell.
Mayor Nicholson.
Alexis Peckrell.
Next, we have a presentation from the superintendent's secondary cabinet on facilities and overcrowding in secondary schools.
Thank you. And here to present this evening is Jacqueline Feldman, one of our teachers at Classical.
Do you have it? Do you want me to plug it in?
We can do it for you.
Okay. I'll just pull it up. You can click, yeah. If it wants to load, that would be nice. Hmm? Yeah. Okay. Good evening, Chairman of the School Committee, Mayor Nicholson, members of the school committee, Mr. Castellanos, Mr. Dugan, Ms. Gaitley, Mr. Penya, Mr. Reed, and Mrs. Sadowite, deputy superintendents. My name is Jacqueline Feldman, and I am an ELA teacher for multilingual learners at Lynn Classical High School, where I also proudly graduated in 2014. And I've had the privilege of serving as a member of the superintendent's secondary teacher cabinet, a group of elected teacher representatives that we established during the 2023-2024 school year for the past two years. When I first received the invitation to join the cabinet from Mr. Bobby Bishop, I genuinely thought it was a mistake, maybe even a joke, because while we had the opportunity to vote for representatives within our schools to be present on this cabinet, it wasn't until that official invitation came that I began to feel like the district finally might actually be serious about hearing directly from teachers. Thus, our work began. In all my years as a student in Lynn Public Schools and now five years in teaching, I had never seen a space where educators could speak candidly and collaboratively with district leadership about the day-to-day realities that we face in the classroom. This cabinet has gratefully given us that space. And tonight, I'm here to represent the voices of the secondary teachers who've trusted me to carry their concerns forward regarding the facilities at the secondary level, hence this presentation. Through the secondary cabinet and alongside the elementary and early ed cabinet, we have been meeting once a month with the superintendent and her deputies and other district leaders to discuss challenges we've identified that deeply impact teachers' day-to-day work. As a teacher who advocates fiercely for my multilingual learner students, I've taken this cabinet role incredibly seriously. I've tried to listen to my colleagues and my friends, my peers, my coworkers, and bring their concerns and suggestions to the table. Tonight's presentation is the result of that effort exactly. I want to note that tonight's presentation on facilities at the secondary level is one of many that the secondary cabinet and elementary cabinet teachers have put together and shared with district leadership. It was created in partnership with Kerry Boudreaux, who I worked with this entire year, an ELA teacher at Pickering, and the LPS Secondary Induction Coordinator. While she's unable to join us tonight due to an injury, I know that she's watching. Hello, Kerry. Her voice and vision are reflected in every slide that you'll see as we work together diligently to put together the most accurate information we could. Together, we focused on the issue of facilities and a little bit of scheduling at the secondary level, which are challenges that impact on every teacher, every student, every day. So what the data tells us is that LPS is severely overcrowded, especially at the secondary level. And the focus on this presentation you'll see constantly refers back to Classical and English. Kerry and I were part of Facilities and Schedules Focus Group within the secondary cabinet, and we decided to look at the data that said that non-classroom spaces are being used for instruction. We have poor building conditions, e.g., climate control issues, and there is a lack of private or confidential spaces for students and staff. The key problems that were identified were, as you can see, instruction happening in gyms and libraries, cafeterias, hallways, particularly in Pickering. This is a disruption to learning, strains staff, and lowers student engagement outcomes. Unsafe or inappropriate environments for quiet and confidential activities, such as IEP meetings, 504 meetings, social work, and clinical meetings are also taking place in our facilities. The root cause breakdown is a method of root cause analysis that was used to identify the underlying reason for problems by repeatedly asking why. Kerry and I did quite a bit of the whys in our notes. It involves asking why five times, with each answer leading to the next why question, until fundamentally we figure out what the problem is and unpack those issues. The bottom line you can see here is that enrollment has grown in LPS, but new facilities have not kept up with enrollment and the pace of enrollment. Renovations and expansions are rare, except for the current expansions in progress with Tech, FDCA, CASA, TEAMS, the Early Childhood Center at Bennett Street and Bassam Street. Funding is insufficient or diverted. The city has a portion of that LPS budget to maintain and repair buildings, but does not generate funding to support new construction or years of deferred maintenance on their own. Land contamination adds to costs of the projects. Long-term planning hasn't kept up with the pace of the real needs in the classroom. And our root cause analysis was that a lack of long-term planning, environmental barriers, and insufficient funding is leading to severe issues at the facilities level. So, the school year '26 impact to English and Classical, specifically shifting populations to the expanded seats at Frederick Douglass Collegiate Academy and CASA, will provide the projected seat relief. And projected is underlined, of course, because this is just an analysis of what we hope to happen at the expansion. Ninth graders attending Frederick Douglass and CASA will total a 326, which will alleviate the seats at English and Classical. Sixth graders attending CASA would be 150. And eighth graders attending LVTI would be 300, these numbers alleviating enrollment spaces and seats at Classical and English. The red marker for LVTI's seats is important to note that this is the first class that will remain at Lynn Tech for grades nine through 12, meaning they will not return to English and Classical. So, the hope there is that that enrollment will stay and alleviate the seats for Classical and English. The next bullet down, you can see the projected seat relief in total at Classical. It's 1,795, drops to 1,661. English to 2,062 from 1877. Third Marshall Middle School from 1350 to 1249, Braid from 1265 to 1198. And Pickering remains at 583. And the projected seat relief for the next year is below. I won't read that. So, one of the other issues that Kerry and I identified in our research were concerns for the completion of the Fecto building. The ISD timeline for fixing the current building issues at Fecto is a two-month working window from July to August with renovations for classroom spaces, bathrooms, and elevators. At this current time, the building is not compliant for disabled students, staff, and the public. And according to ISD, the building will be compliant for the projected opening in September. The next step to our five whys root cause analysis was an action plan overview. And you can see there's five particular bullets in line with the five whys protocol. For a facility needs assessment, long-term facilities planning, creative funding strategies, smarter, more equitable scheduling or flexible scheduling, i.e., shifts at the high school level, and transparent ongoing communication regarding these facilities changes. Our first action step is a facilities needs assessment, which we discovered would be able to review each school's current usage of classroom space and usage of non-classroom space to assess utilization percentages and how this is impacting actual instruction. Then, we would prioritize the high-new schools, which is English and Classical, and build on the successes that we've seen within the district at Bennett Street, Eastern Bank, and Friends Street. Action step two is long-term planning, which would mean collaborating with architects at ISD and city planners, considering modular classrooms, new wings or new buildings, sticking to redistricting decisions, and involving families and students with tours, awareness clubs, surveys, students and clubs advocating for their own buildings as well. Current step three is creative funding, meaning applying for state or federal infrastructure grants, partnering with state delegation to support advocacy for funding, partnering with local businesses and alumni, fundraising an LPS gala, road races, other creative ideas to involve the community and stakeholders, and create development or advancement subcommittees or clubs for students. Four is scheduling solutions, which is a staggered start time or school steps for English and Classical. And five is better communication because, you know, the teachers and staff, students, we need to all know and be on the same page about what is happening in the updates that we're looking to make at the buildings, including updates in monthly newsletters for schools individually and involving teachers in the planning decisions. Looking ahead, we hope to share and review this plan with staff and families, gather more data from the high-impact schools, mainly Classical and English, begin grant writing on facilities research, more of that in-depth analysis, and present updates to stakeholders and state delegation to continue their involvement. The research and best practices as part of the five whys is, you know, the overcrowding impacts student learning, teacher burnout. And the links, hyperlinks, are sources that Kerry and I put together. So, that red is full of articles and journals that support the research that we made and sort of focus on the key ideas in this presentation. And we can't build tomorrow's schools and yesterday's buildings, but with planning and support and partnership, we can work together to fix the issues. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody have any questions? Thank you so much for the presentation, all the research, the entire cabinet, and everyone that participated. We really appreciate it. Some fantastic thinking here. And I know we're meeting soon, and I'm looking forward to that discussion.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item is data overview.
Good evening, everyone. Please excuse me, I may sound a little congested and a little allergic. But thank you so much for your time this evening. And tonight, I'm going to talk about a lot of data, but not going to go into a deep dive about all of the data. Just going to hit a couple of high points. And next slide, please. So, tonight, again, this is a data snapshot. It's not in the weeds of every single point. I'm more than happy to answer any questions to go into additional detail as well. We're going to identify some trends and disparities to inform targeted supports and improvement strategies, looking at our different student groups in each piece of data. Not all student groups, but at least looking at at least one for each type of data. And then, connect data to some action. It's one thing to admire the data and to talk about it, but to take action is another thing, and it's what we hope to use the data to inform all decisions. You've probably seen this in every single presentation that I've had. It's just a friendly reminder about how we use data. Again, that the data is our roadmap wherever we are in the journey, whether it's the beginning of the year, middle of year, or end of year. And we are at the end of year right now. And so, again, we're not just here to present the data, but we're here to use it, aiming for equitable, excellent outcomes for all our students. So, we're not going to stop at the reflection part either. We must be ready to take action. So first, we're going to talk about the Student Climate Survey. This was the first full year of an administration. Last year, we piloted with six schools. And this year, we went full-fledged with the fall administration and the spring administration. And this is just a timeline to show you where we are. It's really part of a three-year strategic plan to elevate all stakeholder voices from the different perspectives. And so, we have the staff and student survey... I'm sorry, the student survey that we're looking at right now. And actually, next month, we're piloting the staff climate survey. And next year, we'll be piloting a family and community survey. So, we'll have a 360 perspective of the thoughts of how our schools are doing, our district is doing. And again, we're in spring 2025 with the first full-scale implementation on the Student Climate Survey. Just to reflect and ground you in what the survey measured, I'm not going to read them all. However, I will connect the first row in blue, "School Belonging", which is tied to one of our district goals around school belonging. And you can look and see that there are different areas there. Can you go back just for one slide, Christina? I just want to give them a moment to be able to read through the different areas that were measured on the survey. Thank you, next slide. And so, those were the areas that were measured for all third through 12th grade. What was different about the sixth through 12th grade is they had some additional areas that were... areas that were maybe not necessarily appropriate for our lower elementary schools, and that was in collaboration with some of our school leaders when we were in the pilot as well, and then just looking at some of the questions as well of thinking about if you take the word grit. Does a third grader know what grit really is, particularly in the way that it was described? So, that's why you'll see a different set of questions for our sixth through twelfth grade students. And the survey says. I'm just gonna look at some participation first. So, in the fall, we had about close to ninety-five-hundred students to participate. In the spring, we had about eleven-hundred less students to participate. And, um, and talking to some of the school leaders, partially, uh, part because we were administering MCAS at the same time as well. And so, thinking about how do, again, using that data, we know we got eleven-hundred students less to take the survey. How do we do better next year and ensure that we capture more voices, which we have increased? In the fall, when we took the survey, we offered it in one, two, three, four, five, six languages, and then we expanded it this spring with an additional two languages. So, when you see Vietnamese and French in the fall, that wasn't offered in the fall, but we expanded it this year, and you do see that some students participated as well. And also, from fall to spring, just because the numbers went down, that doesn't necessarily mean that there was fewer students participating in that language. Take, for instance, Haitian Creole is closely related to French. And so, you saw a shift in Haitian Creole, and then when we gave the students access to French, they actually took it in French. So, again, thinking about when we give our students access to things, that they really do take the opportunity to engage and participate in it. So, looking at our overall, we've talked about, you've seen the domains, and that's what you see under the category right there. And overall, if you aggregate or average all of those up, you'll see our overall favorability as a district from, based on those nine thousand five hundred and twenty-eight students, on a scale of one to one-hundred, is an eighty-point-two percent. So, that means that the students were fa, entered favorably. Eighty percent of our responses were favorable when you look at all the other categories. You can see that the categories were, are organized based on highest to lowest favorability. You can see that diversity inclusion was at the top. And again, I'm not gonna go over all of them. I'm just gonna call out a couple of them. And at the bottom was school engagement at sixty-six percent. Next slide, please. This was our spring administration. So, you see, it didn't change much. It went from eighty-point-two to eighty-point-five from the fall to the spring, and that diversity inclusion is still at the top, and school engagement is still ranked the lowest. So, that was a high-level overview of just generally overall. Now, let's look at the Student Climate Survey through the lens of student groups. And that's usually what we refer to as disaggregating the data. So, when you look at race and ethnicity, this doesn't represent all of our students' race and ethnicity. However, when the number of students participating in a test or assessment is less than ten students, and we have an anonymous or confidential survey, we don't report those results publicly to ensure that those students are not able to be identified. So, I just wanted to call that out. So, there are different domains, and I select the school belonging because it is tied to one of our, not only our district goal this year, but also our district strategic plan. And you can see that there are a couple of questions. There is one specific question around, overall, how much do you feel like you belong at your school? But there are other ways besides explicitly asking that one question that you can get to understanding a student's sense of belonging. So, that's why you see additional questions there. And you can see variance by color, as in red or gray, and how dark the red is. The darker the red, the lower it is, and gray indicates a slightly higher, grayish-blue indicates a slightly higher. When you look at multilingual learner status, on the left in blue is our L students' favorability, and this is the same category versus our non-L. There's not much difference, however, our L students did select school belonging at a higher, slightly higher favorability than our non-L students. And here are additional domains as well for our multilingual learner status. The valuing of school and some questions under that, and self-management around how do they manage their own behaviors within school and classrooms? And I do wanna acknowledge and call out that this was not about a specific individual class, that this is about their overall school experience, not about my English teacher as a teacher individually, not about my math teacher individually, but overall school experience. And so, I'm sorry, could you go back just one slide? And so, the darker blue here, the darker the blue, the higher. Anything in red is not necessarily where we wanna be, and then you'll see the gray is kind of in the middle. So, you can see, just for instance, that our, our not L, our students who are not L's show a difference in how the valuing of school. When you look at our students with disabilities, our former IEP students ranked at eighty-eight, eighty-nine percent favorability in compared to their non-IEP peers and their IEP peers. And then, looking at that same data for our former IEP, IEP, and not IEP students, you can see the differences by color for each question. And just to call out one specific thing that is starkly different, and if, if how you're looking at this of how often did you pay attention and ignore distractions? Some of the questions have the reverse, or either that the, the forty percent is lower, but acknowledging that some of the questions are the reverse. The higher the rating in some questions, the more favorable it is, but that's accounted for on the backend and the calculations and the aggregation of the data. Next slide, Christina. So, we looked at, generally, there was no change in how our students felt a sense of belonging in our schools overall. However, when you're looking at that helicopter view, sometimes it can mask success, or it could mask some really serious results that you need to look deeper into, because it's not necessarily the best situation. And so, what I did wanna take a moment is to shift away from that helicopter view and acknowledge that there were some schools that did experience some success and exceeded their school belonging goals. And so, this is just a diagram, a visual of how we're defining belonging within the district. And in the top right, you may not be able to see it here, but I do believe you have the PowerPoint. In the top right, you can see more so those district-level actions of how we own belonging, a sense of belonging. And then, you move down to those school-wide actions down at the bottom left, and then what it may look like at the classroom level on the bottom right. So, right now, what we're about to look at are three particular schools, and you can look at some of those school-wide actions on that graph where they exceeded their goal. And the district goal was to increase school belonging by three percent, which we did not meet. However, these schools set goals in alignment with the district school, with the district plan for belonging and exceeded those goals. Next slide. So, we had Fecto Lyrd that improved by fifteen percent. That's a lot from the fall to the spring. And so, their goal was to improve by three percent. They improved by fifteen percent. And these are just some pictures to share. The school leaders were asked to share some pictures that they felt like represented school belonging for them. Lynn English High School improved by five percent. Again, they set a goal at three percent, but they exceeded their goal and improved by five percent. And finally, Washington Elementary exceeded their goal and improved from fall to spring by four percent. So, kudos to these schools. We'll be digging into maybe some focus groups, additional conversations to learn from them. Sometimes, we learn best from our peers of what's happening at your school. And you notice, I don't know what any of you noticed about the three schools that are there, but these are some of our toughest schools. And they've created environments where the students took these surveys. And, and they're saying, I feel like I belong at my school. So, kudos to Washington, Mr. Anthony Frye, Lynn English, Dr. Rody Peña, and Fecto with Mara Dergensky. Before I shift into the next data point, does anyone have any questions about the school climate survey? Yes, memory.
I'm sorry if you said this. Was there any rationale to why the former IEP students did a lot better than the other two groups on most categories, besides the few you highlighted?
Um, we just got the data analyzed, and I think it closed on May ninth. The survey closed on May ninth, and so, we've just got like this initial view of data. And so, we'd have to do some root cause analysis, particularly because this was an anonymous survey, of thinking about how we will want to do that and identifying those students and making sure that they're comfortable with that.
Yeah. I just find that to be a very interesting data point.
All right. Thank you. So, now, we're gonna take a, look at our WEDA access data from winter twenty-twenty-five. And some of these graphs are from Open Architects, our, our dashboards, and what you do all have access to our MCAS dashboards that you can access at any time. And the WEDA access overview, we had over seven thousand of students to test, and I think I have the slide in there where I look at the number of students that have increased over the number of years, the most recent five years. You can see that on the left. Our average WEDA access score on a scale of one to six is a two-point-eight-eight, and you'll see in blue that that's a plus-point-oh-eight from the previous year. However, for accountability purposes, Desi sets targets for individual students. And the indicator, or one of the major indicators that accounts for accountability, which impacts our ranking as a district, is making progress. So, you see that made progress at forty-one percent. We improved that by eight-point-nine percent from the previous school year, which was one of our goals, and we exceeded that goal as well. And there's some additional information here. On the left side of the table, it just tells you the difference in scores and number of test takers, based on whether it was their first time taking the test or they had previously tested. And then, on the right, you see our data for the past five years. In red is a level one, and as you go up, the bar graph, that gets higher in level. And so, over time, you can see in blue that the blue has increased slightly, but it has improved. Next slide, please. So, there are different indicators, again, of talking about what counts for accountability when we're talking about our district ranking and performance over time. Each of these represents the last five years, however, they are two different measures. Students that are making progress are still in the program, and that's, we want them to continue to make progress. And you can see, again, from twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five, we went from thirty-two percent to forty-one percent, which is also the highest that we've had in the last five years. On the right, you see attainment. Basically, those are the students that have exited the program. They are no longer have that L status, and we were at eleven percent this year, and it is also the highest that we have had in the past five years, the first time that we've had double-digit students in the five years to make attainment. This is an overview on how our students changed from one year to the next. And so, it's, in simple terms, if I was a two last year and I moved to a three, then I improved by one level. If I moved from a one to a two, I still improved by one level. And so, this represents basically, you can see that seventy-five percent of our students increased, whether it was by point-two, point-eight, or more than two levels, seventy-five percent of our students increased on the WEDA access. They may not have met their target, but they improved. And then, this slide just shows you by the various domains how they performed, and remember that's at overall two-point-eight-eight, but you can see our student strength is really in listening at a three-point-eight-eight. On the far right, this is the graph where you can see the number of years that a student who tested, how long they've been in Massachusetts. And so, it goes from zero to one, two to four, five to seven, or eight or more years. And if you look from left to right, from twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-four, you'll see a slight shift. One, you're gonna see a, not a slight shift, but a dramatic shift from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-four in the count of students that are counted there. And so, it went from forty-eight-seventy-three to sixty-six-seventy-six. But you also see in the darker colors, the numbers increase over time for how long they've been here when it's eight or more years. And so, in theory, we would expect that the longer that a student is here, that they're exposed to the language, that the better their outcomes would be. Next slide. So, and looking at our duly-identified students, similar scores but unequal progress when we talk about equity. And so, again, now that helicopter view can sometimes mask the real results. And so, if you just look, and for clarity, duly-identified students means that they are a multilingual learner and a student with a disability. And so, if you just look at that average of a two-point-nine for our students who are multilingual learner and have an IEP and multilingual learners without, it looks like, oh, they're performing at the same rate. Yes, however, when you look at those accountability factors of making progress, you see that our duly-identified students are making progress at half the rate of our students who are just multilingual learners. And you see that also similarly for our students who are making attainment, meaning exiting multilingual learner status. And so, the four bullets on the right kind of go into some details about that similar starting point, but different trajectories. We may start at the same place, but we don't end up at the same place, and that the consistence may not be meeting the complex needs of our duly-identified students, which means that there's likely a need for more targeted, coordinated support, not just for the students, but the staff as well. And then, also, understanding the difference between equity versus equality as well. Giving students the same does not mean equity. And so, of unpacking some of that why, when you look behind the two-point-nine, it looks like they're performing the same, but when you, again, think about those things that account for accountability of why aren't they making progress at a similar rate. Next slide, please. And so, in thinking about some of the action, we've taken this data, we've looked at it, the schools have their data, we've looked at it as a district. What are some of the things that we're doing? Really pushing collaboration, coordination, collaboration in a meaningful way, again, not just looking at the data, analysis paralysis, but also doing things with the data. In our principal's meeting this month, we looked at some case studies, and we were able to get some feedback based on the case studies around what are some of the things that we should start, stop doing based on this protocol? And so, they were given profiles of two different students, one at an elementary level and one at a second grade level. So, again, that opportunity to engage with their peers, which we often appreciate being able to have that opportunity, but to use some real data to unpack some of the practices that may be leading to some of the outcomes for the students. Next slide, please. Before I move into the last data piece, are there any questions about WEDA access? All right. Thank you. So, this last piece of data is IREDDI that we're gonna look at. IREDDI is an assessment. This is our middle-of-year data. We are currently in our end-of-year window, so that data's not back for us to share. It hasn't closed yet. So, this is the most recent complete data set from IREDDI. IREDDI is currently, for math, it is one through eight, and for reading, it is four through eight. So, keeping that lens when you look at the data. So, just a little grounding, green is where we want our kids to be, and of course, red is not necessarily where we want our students to be. So, this is for ELA for grades four through eight, and what this shows you is the last three years of data on the bar graphs on the left, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, and you'll only see the fall and winter. This assessment is administered three times a year. You only see the fall and winter, because those are the windows that we have completed for this year. What you'll see circled in green from the fall to winter, you'll see a slight increase in blue, which is what we want to see. And those are our students that are on or above or near grade level. What you'll also see in red is a slight decrease, if my glasses are serving me correctly from this far, I believe, from fall, forty-eight percent to forty-one percent. And then, it just shows you the number of students that tested, because that can impact our outcomes as well. We had a similar number of students test in the fall and in the winter. But you'll see that overall increase of students- But you'll see that overall increase of students on or above grade level of five point four percent. And um I'm just gonna go back, can you go back one slide, Christina, please, Dr. Galilea, thank you. Um that the national data shows that there is a point eight correlation between iReady and MCAS assessment, um your state assessment. And so we did some internal analysis ourselves and used some of our real data to look at that from previous years. And we found that it is um very close to what the national data says, that it's somewhere between point seven-two and point seven-five. So this is a a pretty good predictor of how our students will perform on MCAS. And this is by grade level. And so you'll see an arrow, I just pointed out one grade level, um eighth grade, well, actually I pointed out two, eighth grade. On the left is fall, on the right is spring. And so you'll see a reduction in red for eighth grade. That's that three or more grade levels behind sixty-one percent of our students in eighth grade, we're three or more grade levels behind, and ELA is measured by iReady. By the middle of year, that was fifty-five percent. And so its movement is not necessarily where we wanna be, but it is movement in the right direction. Now, what you will see with the star for fourth grade is they went from forty percent three or more grade levels behind in the fall to twenty-nine percent, three or more grade levels behind. So those students moved up, they got better, a significant double-digit number of fourth grade. And so what we did in that principals' and directors' meeting is allow those elementary principals to speak to what are some of the things that they felt like contributed to that growth that we saw in fourth grade. And so we are having those conversations, they're having the opportunities to share with their peers what's working in their schools. Now we're shifting to math, it's the same orientation. Um what you'll see here um is a, on the left, I've circled grades one through four because you'll see some significant shifts in the students that were grades three or more grade levels behind. Take for instance, when you look at second grade, that's why it starred. They went from sixty-three percent of their students two or more grade levels behind to forty percent of their students two or more grade levels behind. That's a twenty-three percent improvement, that's what you wanna see. And so some great things are happening in second grade. And so what our hope and expectation is, is that those students, next year when they get into third grade, they're gonna blow MCAS out the out the ranks because they've made so much improvement in those earlier grades. And so again, looking at that lens from different student groups uh with a focus on our multilingual learners. Uh again, a comparison to our Ls who are non-L students, there was improvement in both groups. But again, you see that improvement for our non-L groups was three times as much as for our L students. So how, thus thinking about how can we better support our Ls in being successful in math in grades one through eight is demonstrated by our iReady, which is a good indicator of how they would perform on MCAS. And I do wanna note just one, not a small thing, um but if you look at the number of students, what do you notice about the number of students that are testing? You notice that over five thousand of our students are L. And so that number is higher than the not L students who tested in math in one through eight. Next slide, Christina. And so I'm just bringing us back here um before we show, as we shift out of the data, of thinking about the emphasis of not just reflecting on the data, but taking action. Um as I wrap up the iReady questions, does anybody have any, does anyone have any questions about the iReady assessment?
Yep, sure. Uh thank you for the data. Um you mentioned that the the principals are starting to have some conversations about what is working. Is there a common theme that's coming from that or is that still kind of in the beginning stages of that conversation?
Um there were quite a few things and the past two weeks have been quite busy. And so if I can remember correctly, one of the specific things was about the intentional use of their school-based staff. And so I remember principal talking about their CITs or some of the practices that they are seeing, um more effective use of data um is one of the things that we heard as a theme as well. And so I recall, there are multiple things, but those were two specific things that I do remember. Specifically, multiple schools um that we um heard from did say more effective use of data, consistent use of data. But I do remember intentional use of staff who were in their building like a CIT.
Do you have a question?
No, it's pointing to you.
Okay. Didn't we use iReady before? Did we ever use iReady? In the district?
Yes.
Yes, it's been here for three, this is our third year. Right, so tw- since COVID, but in person?
Then we switched to consistently, we didn't switch for ELA? Okay, alright, thank you. I just need a classification on that.
Other questions? Did you have anything else you were gonna?
Um there's, I think there's one last slide of setting direction, using the data to drive decisions and reflection in action. Um last week, the ELT, we um had a session with principals um where we were able to have some focused learning around advancing equity-centered leadership and what that looks like, those practices look like. Um particularly in thinking about um how equity shows up in academics. Um and um member Gailey, you'll probably remember Bloom's Taxonomy, that was something of like thinking about how it shows up in Bloom's Taxonomy, that equity isn't necessarily something that you do on the side, but it's a part of everything that we do in our classrooms. Um but also streamlining our departments for greater cohesion and cross collaborative prom um planning. And even the shift in the department where I was over, uh moving data assessment and accountability under academics uh creates greater cohesion and the opportunity to share data more effectively and have those conversations uh in a more integrated way. But also thinking about a landscape analysis of existing supports in schools and overall effectiveness is what we're doing, working. And if it's not, um thinking about what do we need to shift um to improve those outcomes for some of those student groups that we looked at, particularly our multilingual learners or even our duly identified students um who are multilingual learners and students with a special um designation. And then we're also looking at planning our summer leadership institute, um focused on our priority areas where we do some uh capacity building, some root cause analysis, and also again rethinking um how we may be illuminating or lifting different practices. I think that's it, that may be the last slide.
Any other questions? Well, let me just say, thank you so much for the for the presentation, for all the work that went into gathering the the presentation as well as uh congratulations to all the students and and educators that have been putting in so much to be able to achieve these these results. Um and uh you know, it's great, it's great to get to you today, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very quick recess?
Yeah, we'll take a recess.
So the recommendation is to allow um Lincoln Thompson, grade five, uh to Canterbury Lake Salem, New Hampshire on June tenth. Lin Tech Skills USA to National uh Leadership and Skills Conference in Atlanta, Georgia on June twenty-third through twenty-eighth. And Sewell Anderson, grade five, to Nature's Classroom Freedom, New Hampshire, September twenty-second through the twenty-sixth.
Make a motion to accept all three field trip requests.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it?
Have fun.
And then what's the recommendation on the following donations?
To accept the donation to Karuna Corporation, MC Held Liquors, to Frederick Douglass uh Collegiate Academy in the amount of a hundred dollars, to Salem Five to Fallon Elementary in the amount of five hundred dollars, and Wendy's of New England LLC to Lin Tech Class of twenty twenty-five in the amount of three hundred eleven dollars and forty-nine cents.
Make a motion to accept all three requests.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Eyes have it, thank you so much to the donors. We already did see D and E, we're gonna skip because the amended agenda didn't get posted correctly, just to comply with open meetings, we'll do that at the next meeting. Were there any votes taken in the curriculum subcommittee meeting, member Satterwhite?
Yes, it was a um motion made to adopt uh and move to the full committee, open syed education for grades three to five for school year twenty-six.
In the form of motions, there are second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Satterwhite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Are, was it, there's
There was another motion made to adopt and move to the full committee investigating investigating history for grades five through seven for school year twenty-six.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Satterwhite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Great, next item is the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six budget. Um we have been talking about this for the last several months and uh you recall that we kind of planned out the the process. And just to remind the last couple of meetings, we um the last meeting presented the budget uh and went through it and you know, some clarified questions, but mostly just our presentation. And then the goal tonight is to have questions and and discussion. We also at the last meeting set down the public hearing, so the public hearing isn't until the um first meeting in June, and that's when we would expect to to start taking votes um on the budget. Uh and so to the 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 goal tonight is to hear folks uh questions and and uh opinions and uh discussion. Um we have also uh asked members to to send questions that they had um in advance and and appreciate uh all of you for for doing that. Um those questions have been received and I and I believe that the district has sent um answers. Uh and the the goal there is to uh you know, have prepared research responses uh to those questions and and this is what we've done the last few years and that, and also in the interest of transparency, those questions and answers will all be be posted on on the on the website and publicly available. Um but we also uh have this opportunity, this evening, to have the the live discussion as as well uh for for whatever questions that the the members uh would like to raise. And so uh we, I think, can kind of um open it up to to questions that that folks wanna wanna present. Member Dugan?
Uh thank you. And before I start, you know, uh I do wanna recognize the amount of work that goes into a budget this size. Um I can't even imagine sitting down with all these numbers. Um you know, but I, the role of this committee is to, is to, my opinion at least, is to, you know, look at this budget, question the budget, possibly make suggestions, which I'm I'm gonna do in just a moment. Um but I also wanna mention the lens that I'm I'm coming at this from, you know, as as a educator of somebody that, you know, twenty, don't wanna say it, but lots of years now. Um and I think that's part of the reason I'm sitting here. I think that's part of the reason the constituents that put me here do that, is they want that insight, they want that that lens. Um so that being said, um I do have some recommendations. My first, you know, and it's all on on um the website, but my first that I do wanna talk about is the possibility of not coming back next year with uh three deputy superintendents. Um I think, a- and this is no offense to the work that you guys do. Um I I fully respect and appreciate everything that you guys do. If it comes off that way, I apologize. Uh that's not what it's meant to do. But what it is meant to do is to, you know, possibly alleviate some of these cuts that we do need to make within our staff. Um so that would be the first one. Um the second would be at CASA, a program specialist. Uh so in our in our budget, there was a program specialist uh budgeted for CASA. I do question that a little bit. It was mentioned tonight, you know, giving um the same does not mean equity. Uh the answer to that question is that we're doing this because it's been the same as some of the other schools. Um so I do question that, you know, um and the possibility of us saving some money there as well. Again, to alleviate some of the cuts um in our SEL and um department heads, which you know, I I think obviously with our open mic tonight and over the past few weeks, it's a it's a very unpopular cut. Uh I cuts need to be made, I do understand that. It is a very unpopular cut, um and I do think it is, it is taking a hit at the morale of our staff. Um and our budget should reflect our priorities. Um I heard a lot with Dr. Shorter and no- and nothing bad, Dr. Shorter at all, but you know, about our toughest schools, you know, learning is social, and that the principals are saying that it's because of their staff, you know? It's because of the climate in their schools, it's because of the people they're relying on at the schools. Um and to come back to our deputies, and again, not to belittle the job that you guys are doing, but our our principals and teachers, you need to come first, in my opinion. Um and that's who's in front of our students, that that is who is directly affecting our students. The policies this committee makes, obviously, we're gonna, we're we're having an effect on it. The job that you, the tremendous job that you guys are doing, obviously does have an effect on it. But the biggest effect is, you know, what what the teachers are doing, so. That's all I have to say. Um you know, I, it's hard for me to wrap my brain around the cuts. Um you know, I'm gonna do my best, I know we need to, excuse me, ratify a budget, that's part of our job. Um but I do hope that uh my recommendations are considered and considered strongly, so.
Thank you. Remember, Dugan? Um we, you wanna put that in the form of question that you want to have a response to?
Yeah, that was
Yeah, yeah.
No, you know, I'm not necessarily, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I probably, I I'm not necessarily looking for a response there. I I just feel like, eh, you know, that's something I needed to say and I wanted to say it publicly and
Okay.
you know, this was my forum, so
Okay.
yeah, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Member Reed?
Yeah, I think a little bit echoing, but you know, maybe even a little further. Um and you know, I think when we think about sort of cutting administrators that we talked about, I I don't think we were talking about LSA in particular, but sort of administrators in downtown, which uh we have made some progress on, which I know we'll continue to talk about, but that's where a lot of my focus remains, to see how we can consolidate or or or, you know, minimize um sort of some of this downtown staff. Look, I'm not, again, like member Dugan said, I'm not minimizing anybody's job, but teachers are told time and time again when something has to get cut, that they have to do more with less. And that's the same expectation that I think we should have of our administrators. Will it make your lives hotter, will it make all lives hotter? Of course it will, but I think that's something that we continue to look about, uh look, look out for um as we continue this discussion. We've already made some progress, like I mentioned. Um and and just my other note, 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 I'm not looking for answers, I'm just wanted to uh express the other thing that concerns me is, really with some of these cuts, I know we try to be data-driven, but I'm just still not sold on some of these, and those are some things we can continue to talk about, um that they were data-driven in particular. Um so yeah, that's all I got, but thank you, and I know it's incredibly difficult and we'll continue to talk over the next uh several weeks and hear from public more and more, so.
Thank you, thank you. Member Castellanos?
You know, I just, I just, it just kind of dawned on me after tonight's last um group of um speakers, I open mic. It sounds like, and I did submit a significant amount of questions around the SEO operations. You guys sent a lot of privacy feedback and rationale for um some of the questions I asked, but I I have a, just a question around, how, how will the district account for the years of institutional knowledge that's going to be lost with the SEO cuts? There's a lot of experience on the table. Um when you really get to know the cuts, the faces of the cuts, after the last few months, I've got to really hear from the quality of actually staff that we're looking to cut. And it sounds like there was a lack of retainment. Uh it sounded, we we didn't make attempts to retain these groups of cuts. Um I would like to know why we did not attempt to reduce the reduction of impact. I know we we had put forward multiple, um there were multiple proposals that you guys put forward, you guys were working it out. But there was never, there was never, I don't think, the 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 settlement on on that reduction, it just happened. So I think there's some concerns around, I think, that part too, that there is a lot of expertise um being eliminated. Um and it sounded like the the quantification of it was not fully, I guess, um available at the time of of what we were looking for. I know there was a a plan in time, is it a system in time? What is it? Uh what was the request superintendent that you asked the S- SEO team to provide to you in data? Was there some data that they requested, or you requested?
Yes, so
Moment in time? Moment in time?
Right, so the, the data request had, goes back to like the spring of twenty-four. Um, and then specifically, you know, con- concretely, uh, numerous times towards March and April, really discussing like, how do we make district decisions on, you know, do we need placement of staff when we're not able to look at instances of what clinicians are uh in terms of hours um need by student, right? Because it's very clear that there are some students that you would give an inordinate amount of hours to um versus, right, a, a, a student that requires, based on their IEP, needs counseling. The other student might not have an IEP with counseling, but somebody is, needs to respond when there's a crisis, when there needs to be an intervention. And so uh part of the difficulty with how they collect data for themselves is that it's, it looks different for each person. There isn't consistency across how they're logging the, the information. And so their request as a, as a department came to, for us to explore a platform called Branching Minds um that Desi works with, m- much of the state works with. Um, and so that would give them the ability to log information in a consistent way.
Quantify.
And to explain, right, when we look at what is the, what is, what does the service look like per school, per student, in terms of hours and numbers of students? Because that may look different depending on what that is. What we do know is, for example, um, i- in, in the responses that we provided, uh, we, we were able to submit all of the responses back, um, even as late as this afternoon. And so there is also a chart of like how many students we have in special education that require counseling on their IEP. So looking at that, w- we looked at that back when we were looking at what is the, the um need across schools. We also looked at not only uh delivery service, but for what's required. See, there, there's a difference for what's required, based on what's on the IEP for counseling, and then just responding, which is what we haven't been able to quite quantify in a, in a consistent way over time. And that's what we're looking to do. Um, the other portion of that is that when we look at um the high need schools, which we also listed in the document, there are eight schools that remained with the, with the same allocation. So those are, um, and I believe it, it might be, is it a member Reed's response? I just want to read them off because they're, th- that is important to note, right? We, we wanted to make sure that we had not shifted, I don't have, does some, does somebody have member? Oh, here it is. So I know it's Washington. There are a number of schools that we did not move the allocation. There may have been a shift in supervisor to clinician, but we didn't change the specific allocation. So if Fallon had two positions, um, and this is just an example, one of them might have been a supervisor, the other was a clinician. There are thirty-five students at Fallon. They remained with an allocation of two clinicians, not necessarily a supervisor, a supervisor would be assigned to monitor those clinicians and would be shared with different schools. So uh, let's see, I know, right? Washington, Fallon, Callahan, Harrington, Shoemaker, the emotionally impaired program at Facto Leary, Ford and Ingalls. Those were the eight schools, well, one's a program, right, that is merging with FDCA, but they kept the same allocation in terms of staff. We kept it intact because of the number of IEPs and the expressed need in terms of response uh from clinicians to students and principals expressing that at the budget meetings. When we had budget meetings, principals did share in a number of situations, whether they either had a vacancy, um, whether they were operating uh less one, for example, or less two clinicians, and what that looked like in their everyday support of students. So they did have, the principals did have input, and when we gave, uh, I believe Deputy uh Cohen shared, she had added, one of the documents in our last meeting was a Excel sheet that specifically said what they, what we currently have and what the projected number of clinical staff would be. And it also has notes on the side that it, that state what happened during those budget meetings, which principals um requested in, in a, in a number of cases, a decrease in staff because they did not see the, the need for a response. But again, we do need to collect accurate data to make better decisions on allocations. That, that is absolutely clear.
I definitely just wanted to wait till you finished, 'cause I, I was, I didn't want to interrupt. I, I, you kind of regress around. My question initially was how will you, how is the district gonna account for the institutional years of knowledge loss? Um, I'm not done yet. Can I?
Sure.
Um, 'cause there's also concerns from the rank and file, the staff, I'm hearing that folks weren't really, um, you know, I, I know you, data's important, right? We, we wanna, you know, discuss data and utilize data for decision-making. Um, there was the ratio, the one to two fifty ratio that was ke- kept of getting pointed out, that this is the, this is primary root of why these decisions have been made. Um, there was highly discrepancies within the one to two fifty ratio um by staff who are coming to the table, sharing their concerns and discrepancies around that decision-making route. So I think that's another piece that we cannot just ignore from all the pu- open mics. We have families uh sending us letters, staff that are not just on the chopping block, but the entire SEL staff are highlighting really like key discrepancies within the decisions that are being made to reduce the force. Um, I, 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 I don't understand how in, 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 in your acknowledgement and these rationales, like when I ask you to please explain how cutting SEL positions align with our stated LEM public schools' promise to equity, especially when our students face disproportionately high levels of trauma, housing instability, economic hardship. When I read these, like, y- you did a really great job at just listing like the bigger issue, but for me, i- it doesn't reflect the priorities. I think, remember, Dugan pointed it out, like, there's staff that are coming to the table publicly, that takes a lot of courage to share that this is a, a major concern, concern. And it's not something that, uh, it's, it's hard when you, like, there was no modification, there was like no reconsideration on the, the, we were just looking at the, the LSA as quote-unquote, they were admin, but did you really dive deep into who we're cutting? Because after learning about the clinical supervisor position, and I understand that when you initially put the ratio out, there was fair game, but once you looked at exactly who we're cutting and the level of impact of that reduction from SEL, it's, it's very concerning what that can do. You heard tonight, like, you can't quantify the little child who's in crisis talking about they're gonna kill themselves. How do you quantify that? There was letters that me and you were attached to, that you looked at, this, this success on, on what we're doing. How, how do we, uh, for me, we said we're gonna do something to support the SEL department, right? We want to acknowledge the operation, but we're gonna, we're gonna hit them with the reduction of force? I just can't, and, and we could, I wa- I wanna, matter of fact, if Mayor, could we just go through these questions and we'll just go through, just so we can, in, in the whole, and transparent, just, I don't want to go off script. Let's go through the questions and then we'll go, we'll, we'll settle it there. And then from there on, we have another date, it's June twelfth, and we'll have more conversations. But I, I, please explain how cutting SEL positions align with our stated LEM public schools' promise to equity, especially when our students face disproportionately high levels of trauma, housing instability, and economic hardship. That's for the, the, whoever, who wrote the rationale here? Sorry, I'm looking at my, my.
The, the entire team responded to all pieces of this. This was a, every single question is responded to.
So I think that, that's a question that you're putting forward, and, and so I think you can answer it, right? That's what we're.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so are you, is the request to read the response?
No, actually, I'd rather not. I'd rather hear your, your.
Okay.
I did a justification for what we're doing. I want to know your justification.
So, so the justification is, in the last contract, there was an agreement to stick to a two hundred, two fifty, two hundred and fifty students to one clinician. That was an agreement that was made before I arrived here. I, I did not ma- that, that was a very, and it's in the, the, the contract.
That's.
It was decided by a joint subcommittee, and there were twenty-seven units over that ratio of two fifty to one. Not one, not ten, twenty-seven. So if we applied that theory to other units, like the teachers' um unit or the clerical unit, we would hire for every, eh, for, for every class, we would say, well, we don't need, you know, if it's twenty-five to one, we don't need just one teacher, we need three teachers. And the question would be, why would we, why would we overallocate based, if we agreed on a ratio? So that's the first question. Because part of running this, a, a sound financial school committee budget is to understand that if we don't stick to ratios, we go wildly over the finances.
The ratios are outdated. Wh- when they, when that, when you sent the data, it was from two thousand twelve, correct? And then the U M, the UMass article that was sent, I think, too, that you sent me some additional.
The current data from UMass um and the links are still two fifty to one. The majority of the country is at five thirty-eight to one. Understood. I'm just saying, that's based on, I'm not the researcher.
I know, I'm just trying to tell you.
I'm, I'm just explaining.
I, I understand. I understand that.
But the public also wants teachers, and we also want, and we also want staff. And
Yeah.
There is a number that we have to stick to, and we have tried to make reductions based on, there were, I believe, seven clinicians out of the whole group that weren't certified, that received letters. So we always go through attrition first. So if those positions would be vacant because those clinicians were not certified, those positions closed first. Then anything that's open is open to any clinical supervisor that be, that would go into the clinical, uh, in, in, into the clinician unit. Because there are two different, right, there are two different positions and two different unions.
Okay, so, so how are we prioritizing the mental health and well-being of students, especially those who come from marginalized backgrounds, if we reduce the very staff trained to provide the support? And I know you said you sent out a detailed spreadsheet, but could you break it down, please, and, and ta- tell us a little bit why the, how, what are we gonna do to provide the capacity to support that we're gonna need by reducing those positions, right? There's an impact. Did you do an impact assessment on that?
We, it would be, it would be great to do a, a whole impact assessment, except the clinicians only have one month of data, February twenty twenty-five, where we wouldn't have any consistent data to do an impact study.
Can you explain how schools will effectively respond to student crises, including self-harm, behavior escalation, and trauma response uh without a strong SEO infrastructure in place?
Our protocols haven't changed. We went from ninety-seven in the total unit to eighty-one.
That's, that's, that's your rationale? That's what you provided?
Well, the, the protocols haven't changed for responses to critical incidents.
That's what you.
That's what you asked.
Well, that's what you, that's all you got for that one? Okay. So given the.
I, I would appreciate, Mayor, that we do this with respect.
Remember Castellanos, I think asking the question is appropriate and.
No, no, I'm asking the question. My apologies.
Okay.
We got it. Okay, so the next question is, given the national rise in youth anxiety, depression, and suicide rates, especially in low-income communities, how is it reasonable to reduce mental health support in our district?
So while that, we ha- we have data that Tina shared, Tina Hofnagle shared back in February um at one of the school committee meetings, it was in an open meeting, she did share data on how we manage and how, what those numbers look like. That's not specifically asked in this question, but we can, we can give you, we can provide, we can update this with the actual numbers on the risk assessments.
How does this decision reflect community values and priorities, especially in a district where SEL support is not a luxury but a necessity? Uh, what are the ethical implications of cutting SEL staff in a district that already faces systemic barriers? Is this a step forward or backward injustice for the city of LEM public schools?
I'm not sure what question you're reading.
That's, I, it's on. So how does, let me, I could just.
Oh, I see it.
So how does this, this, how does this decision reflect community values and priorities, especially in a district where SEL support is not a luxury but a necessity? And what are the ethical implications of cutting SEL staff in a district that already faces systemic barriers? Is this a step forward or backward injustice? Sorry, I meant to say, I, I.
Adjusting this to one to two fifty, and in some schools, it's still lower than two fifty, based on those eight uh schools that I read off earlier. Um, it's not a reflection of a diminished commitment to students, rather a representation and an effort to align an agreed-upon model with both sustainable and equitable across the district. Even amid financial constraints, we remain focused to ensuring that students have the highest level of need, continue to receive targeted SEL and mental health supports. Our commitment to student wellness and equity remains unwavering, and we continue to prioritize and adapt our support based on ongoing. There seems to be a sentence missing here.
Yeah, I was missing a question online. I don't know, it was chopped off. Completed. Alright, so my next one is, so after hearing, um, the public obviously come by to talk about SEL, I think it was a big day where, I think it was March twenty-seventh, um, was it March twenty-seventh when we had a lot of SEL folks show up for uh public um open mic? And i- it sounded very compelling. Um, and it sounded like, for us, I think I was hearing that, you know, there was some concerns around how we engage these folks. And I put a question in about, has the district engaged teachers, families, or department heads themselves in meaningful dialogue before those proposed changes? And, and when I thought, you know, there is the process, are you, you guys have a process, what you went through, but when I'm hearing open mic, it sounded like folks were first heard at open mic. And I, and I, I think for me, transparency is very important. Um, what are we doing to address that part of it, especially the, I, you're gonna stick with the ratios, I understand, but like that outcry, like I, I don't know how, 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 can you explain how you feel about that?
I, I don't think that's inappropriate. I, how I feel, we're, we're, we're doing this in an objective manner.
So there's no, can you comment on those, I guess, are we able to comment on public, on the public mic?
I, I mean, I, I'm gonna do my best here to try to be fair to this process here. I, I don't think you need to ask her how she feels about it, but if you have a que- the, the, the question there is about the, the process for engagement, is that a fair?
Um. It's fair.
Okay. Do you want to talk to the engagement process?
Sure, sure. In terms of the engagement, um, a- and your question addresses department heads, which I'm not sure, clear what that, what it has to do with, we're, we are sticking to the clinical team, correct?
That's a discrepancy on my end. My apologies. So let's scratch that, let's, we could strike that part in the question. Thought we were keeping it.
Yeah, so, so, so then in other words, the question is just, has the district engaged teachers and families?
Families, right.
Yeah.
So just take out that department head.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
So it, it was really about the, uh, a- and, and this was one of, uh, when we listened intently um to some of those community members at open mic, they discussed a very long, six-week process of what the, they had to wait for in decisions. Um, I always believe that it's better to have those long dialogue periods with other leaders, with union leadership, to make sure that we're making the right decisions. Um, when we, when we engage staff, it will always be impossible to engage all staff. Right? That's like saying, we engage with the leadership of, and we did have a number of discussions about the supervisors in particular, with union leadership, with LSAA, as well as when we spoke about just the clinicians with L T U. And we did discuss the allocations and the ratio as well.
When you were part, part of your decision-making, did you ever visit any of the clinical teams in the district? And could you elaborate on what that was like, or part of your decision? Because if you're making cuts, right, you gotta learn about who you're cutting.
We asked principals at their meet, at their budget meetings, which is what I said earlier, and each of them discussed, this was discussed with each principal during the meeting, and the leadership is sitting there. It is deputies, it is executive directors, it is business. It is deputies, it is executive directors, it is business administrator, principal. And we ask the questions, and they go through what staffing they need. So are you saying that?
There was no rank and file at the table?
Principals, principals and recommendations are not, like, they are the ones that dictate what is needed at the school. That's what school-based budgeting is.
I think, I think she answered the question, I think you've made your point. As I understand it, she's saying that the.
Principals made the decisions on.
She's, yeah, she talked to the principals, yeah.
Okay, so, but, so rank and file just wasn't part of the conversation?
They discussed who their staff members are at their school buildings, and which positions they needed, and which positions they wanted to change and or cut.
Was there a proposal put forward by the SEO director?
We met with Tina Hofnagle, we also met with Virginia Lee when she was collecting all the data, and we reviewed all of that data that was collected by each of the clinicians. It took her an enormous amount of time. It took her almost a month to put together three and a half weeks' worth of data. Because doing it by hand is an enormous task. And in an age where we live in, in digital society, they should never have to do that.
So why didn't we, why wasn't Branch of Minds provide it to them throughout the, I guess?
They haven't purchased it in the years before, they never requested it. The data ask was there, they had Excel sheets, and from the Excel sheets, they still cannot sort to actually provide us with information on what the service requirements are. That's been, Tina, I mean, when the executive director sat here in the beginning of twenty twenty-five, she said it, she said it to this committee, and she was clear about it. She was very transparent about it.
I'm gonna hold back what I'm about to say, but my next question is around the youth risks, data, the survey that was just rolled out recently. It talked about the need for mental health staff and, I think, is it the Student Health Advisory Council? Is that where it came from? I think it was.
The one we just did.
The one that, the youth risks, is, who was?
Colleen Peterson.
Yeah, Colleen sent it out, so.
A youth risk behavior survey.
What were those recommendations? There were some recommendations that were like, or some. Do I, my email, I said my email, I could just ask.
You are, yeah, I was gonna say, if we, if this is a new question, we may not have the answer, they may not have the answer on the spot, but you're saying this is one of the questions.
No, it's not, so this is not, no, this is a question that I had from.
It's a new one.
It's a, because it was re, it just came.
Yeah, no, that's fine, no, so, so I think, they can just note it down and follow up, yeah.
Yeah, I wrote it down.
All right, that was, there's some recommendations that were made, and it talked about the need for mental health staff. And, and the alternative, also like, like the alternatives, now that we have a SEO, you guys, there's a reduction of force, like the alternative to, I guess, what that looks like. We don't have an impact assessment, like you said, Dr. Alvarez, which, you know, that's something that it takes a year, it take, how long does it take to get an impact assessment? A whole, a year?
We have a, now, we have less, I mean, we have one data analyst at this point, and a condensed data role with the C A O. To do impact studies, you need a statistician, we need a statistician.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I see. Are we gonna hold off for like, next questions for like, the next, I guess, like, Mike, so Member Dugan brought up a really good point, his recommendations, like, so I know we talked before around parameters, around potential cuts, so we would hold back tonight on that part? If we did, if we all decided as a body to move forward with the recommendations that Member Dugan put forward, do you wanna wait to?
I think you can, I think you can articulate that, your support for it, but I don't think we're gonna do motions tonight.
So I do support the deputies, the cut. I wanna publicly voice everything that, to echo what Member Dugan put forward, not to minimize the work that was done, I just think doing a lot, you know, more with less, that mentality at the higher, I think administrators in general, I think a long time ago, I'm gonna hold myself accountable, when I was working on the campaign trail, I'm gonna honor what I said I would do, and I'm gonna honor that. And if there's administrative positions that you haven't looked to cut, I believe you should start looking on those, like, what that would look like, because this is the school committee's budget, and like, we have the authority to look at stuff like that and cut, and ask you to reallocate how we see feasible. So I, I do wanna prepare the administration to please prepare that, because I just feel like at this point, there's major discrepancies that we're highlighting, there's rationales for everything, I don't see any, as all, in every, you guys did a great job deflecting and rebuttling everything I put on here, so I guess we're gonna have to, like, I think, I guess, this is where it's gonna go, I guess, because I don't think, there's no reconsideration. And that's where I, I don't know, like, it doesn't sound like anyone's willing to budge, which.
Mayor, can I share, just in response to Member Dugan's, on the end of your questions, you had, you, you asked for, you had a recommendation, and appreciate that greatly because it puts it in bullet form and in black and white. And so what we did was, we wrote specifically, right, to each of those points, like, what the amounts would be. The clinical unit reduction was in the amount of one point six million. The teacher reduction amount was one point nine million. And the secondary and K-12 coaching positions were in the amount of two point three million for a total of five point eight million. So any, any recommendation of what those cuts should look like, should, the numbers are there. And, you know, we can, Mr. McHugh can further clarify if we have more to break down within those categories. But thank you for that very itemized, because it gave us the opportunity to share exactly what the numbers look like. Thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Just my last question, then, I just had it, it's regarding CASA. So after the presentation on CASA from five eight, the timeline for construction is pretty condensed, as I shared, and you guys obviously presented tonight. I did say the funding looks unsustainable, and I'd like to just clarify what I mean unsustainable. A lot of the grant funding was recently submitted, and there's a lot of what-if in the funding. I feel like the information or presentation that we received should have been shared during the initial planning and development of CASA more, more transparently. We're facing significant fiscal challenges in this budget cycle. Have we thought about delaying this initiative to stabilize some of the district's staff reduction proposals? And I understand the overcrowded piece, I understand like, the high, the need for, the idea was, it was never the idea. It's the, it's the actual, the, I guess, the, for me, the concern comes from the actual project, and, and there are some concerns around the space. But Member Gately was really kind enough to work on talking to Mr. Donovan, who did share some positive feedback on timelines, saying that there are some possibilities, looks pretty strong, that we could meet that. Yeah, yeah, go ahead, if you want.
When I talked to Mr. Donovan, it was because Member Dugan and I went over to Eastern Bank on Tuesday, it was very last minute, but we went over there, and I was sort of taken back to hear that we had a, like, there's a construction company there, that we hired a construction company that's gonna be working there. It's not the way I was used to. Usually, it's all of the, you know, all the custodians or all the people in the school department were doing these changes. But then I found out through talking with Mr. Donovan, that there is a construction company gonna be over there at CASA in the first aging. They already have the, I guess it's called the gang bathroom, already done. And that would be one of the hardest things to do this year, is the gang bathrooms, and next year, and I sent, I don't have it to memory.
No, no, yeah, no, appreciate that.
So, so I asked him, can you please explain this, how are we getting the funds? How is it being paid for so that we know that it's gonna be done? And it, it may not be perfect, but like, if he's saying eight weeks, well, I know it's a ten-week summer vacation. So hopefully, it's done.
I think Member Sadoway did have a really strong question about that in her, her packet. I'm not gonna speak on her behalf, but she's here, but I know she did have a pretty strong question. I just wanna, just put on the record that I'm very, I'm, I'm pretty unsure about CASA's, the infrastructure of the building, as I feel that the building has had issues in the past, and the enrollment target number is a little bit high. And I think there are some, you know, for, I've just been here, and there were some really infrastructure-wise to fully go at, like, I don't know, will it last? Like, there's questions that, will it last? So if we, you know, those repairs that we're talking about, I didn't really see a contingency plan through the project funding sources that you were talking about with the, with the grants. And the fact that we don't have a contingency plan, so if we don't get that approval for those, those fixes, like, where would that, where would those funds get pulled from? The waiver.
The waiver.
Where would that money, so if we don't get that money, what's the contingency, where, where will we pull that money from if we move forward with CASA? That might not be answered now, you might, you might wanna just think about that, because there's no, I don't see a contingency plan if we don't get that. And also, if there's other, once you start peeling back the fixes, too, I think, once you start touching the, the building, there's other spots of the, I think the auditorium, there's other really, there's some places in the building that need to really have a lot of work, so once you, and I've been on building grounds for a while now, and I've seen how these things can work, and once you stop peeling back and fixing things, it costs more money, so like renovation, renovation costs are through the roof, and I don't know.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the question, I mean, I, I think this is true for, for all the construction projects that we do, that, that there could be issues, and then if there were issues, we'd have to come up with additional funding. And it does, it does happen, we do have, we do do projects, and then we run into problems, and we have to figure out the funding sources, and it's one of the, you know, primary functions that the, that the, that the, sort of, project staff do in this work. So we hire people to do the actual construction, but what, what the city folks are doing and the school folks are doing who work on this is managing the project. And so, you know, whether it was the ARPA parks that we did, or, you know, the, the roof replacements we've done in schools in the past, we, we come up with a plan to finance the budget, and then if there's, if there's a major issue that, that derails the budget, we have to find other funding sources to make it, to make it happen, or value engineer the scope so that there's a way to get it done. So that, that is certainly true here, and, and, you know, it's, when you're doing the, these kind of capital projects, the, the, there's a, there is more, the city has more access to one-time funds, you know, so, so it's, it's. It's not like we have to come up for that same, that amount of funding every year, you know, it's, it's, we gotta get this project done, and we gotta figure it out. But it's a risk, it's a risk, and when you do projects, is that, that things could go sideways, and we'd have to come up with the money if we wanted to keep it going.
I think so, it was, someone brought up, it was a constituent that said, when the building's at max, like, because I, I honestly, when you look at CASA, the program, the way it's detailed is phenomenal. You guys, you guys did a phenomenal job on the, on the plan, the idea, the program itself is, that model, I think, is, it's great. It's where it is. It's where, that's, I think, a lot of, I think, de facto, that building, if there's six hundred students, and you start pumping in the volume, using the bathrooms and just traffic throughout the building, right, you start, it's, there's a weird, this building's already been through a lot, that's why, I think, over the years, when I studied, I'm coming from a place of, of why is this happening? Because we had overcrowding issues for a long time, and to have us finally get to a moment where we're gonna invest, in de facto Larry, there have been some red flags presented that were valid. And I think it's worth talking about it, because if people are not, when I say, if people don't feel like their tax money is going in a good place, I have to speak upon it, as I'm a liaison for those folks. And it's valid, because I, I never thought, my constituents, you know, put me on to a situation that I didn't think about, and I, that's a very valid question, because it is, why, you know, after how many years, why didn't, and Member Gately's got something, probably a person, she's probably, she's a chairwoman, so she probably got something, but why?
Well, I literally, there is no place, and you know, we went through trying to find Pickering, where are we gonna put a new building? So now it's like, well, this building has less than a hundred students. English had twenty-two at the time, when we were seriously looking at de facto Larry, and Classical, I think, had two thousand. And that's like seven hundred students over, or five hundred students over at Classical. So you look at de facto Larry, and I'm thinking of Briar Cliff, and I'm thinking of Virginia Barton School, and when I walked into that building.
De facto?
No, first, I'm gonna talk about Briar Cliff. When I walked into Briar Cliff, and I looked at that building, my mind, and Dr. Colella is out there, and she will nod on this, we were scared, it was like, oh my God, how is this ever going to work? So that's the same thing with de facto Larry. These architects, these construction companies now go in and they tear it up, we'll hear if there's an issue, they'll fix the issue, and we won't have to worry about it. It's in two stages. The auditorium probably is not going to be touched till next year, if any. We may not even use it, it, it's. That's why I sent you the plans, so you could see what each floor is gonna look like. We may not use all the space in there, but we'll use enough so that we can have a creative steam school, and we can lower those numbers for those teachers and students at those two high schools that have been, like, waiting and waiting and waiting for some relief. And, and this was viable. That opened up, just like Eastern Bank, that opened up. And so now, we don't have to pay all that money for the modular over at North Shore Community College, we can use Eastern Bank, and we can transition students, so we can open up de facto Larry. So that's really what the thought was behind that. It was like, is it doable? The engineers went in, the architects went in, just like they did with Pickering, and they checked everything out, and this is doable, and I, I trust Mike Donovan, I think he knows what he's talking about.
And, and, yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, no, I was just gonna add to that, when you're.
I'm done.
I, I think in terms of the question of, like, what has changed that we were able to grow in, in the number of students that are, that are in that building, I think one important change to note is that, you know, previously, that building was being used by de facto Larry Junior Senior High School, and then with everybody working together, and the council and you all, and, and we, we acquired a, you know, hundred thousand square foot building in downtown Lynn with the Eastern MEK headquarters, and we now have, we have that space to put the, the alternative, the Harold Dergan Academy. And so I think part of the conversations, because, because that, that is accurate, that we've had these conversations before about, you know, what could we do in de facto? Part, part of the reason that we had more options there is because we, we all of a sudden acquired the space where we could have moved the secondary program.
If I may, Mayor, that, that program has also, at times, had up to three hundred students in the last twenty-three years that it's been used. And so with the updates of the bathrooms and the areas, for common areas, including STEM labs, the existing science labs, to modernize them to, to the actual footprint of a, of a current science lab, that's what we worked with the architects on, to modernize that space.
Yeah, I just wanna comment. Thank you everyone who took the time, you know, with the budget, it's really hard to budget like this, and I just wanted to comment on the, the CASA. I, I, I think it's awesome, you know, we, we have to take a chance, you know, we gotta lessen the burden of the, you know, overcrowding issues, we have to think outside the box. And I think it's a, you know, I, I like the fact that we're, we're thinking outside the box to utilize the space that we have now, you know, and however, I am gonna. however, I am gonna, you know, like I, I shared with, uh, Member Dugan, we were talking, and I, I just said, um, I have a question about having a program specialist. You know, I think we're not having, having a high school with not, not a lot of capacity, I think, you know, we should hold off on that with just a principal, and, you know, and, and I think holding off on the program specialists will, you know, especially where, where we're looking for funding and stuff, and, uh, but I do, I do wanna commend that, I do, you know, I, I, I like the idea of, of, you know, utilizing the space we have, taking a chance, because, you know, we, we, you, we hear it all the time, you know, the, the teachers are over, you know, the students are, 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 you know, the, 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 the classrooms are bigger, you know, especially English and Classical, and the teachers are stressed. We need a, you know, we didn't need to do what we came, we said we're gonna do, we, we gotta reduce classroom sizes. And this is, uh, you know, it's, it's part of taking steps towards that, and, uh, we need to explore that and take a chance with it. That's all.
Thank you, thank you.
I have, I'm sorry, uh, Member Sata, um, Sata White has a question.
Sure, yeah, Member Sata White.
Hi, good evening, guys. At first, I want to apologize for not being able to be present. Unfortunately, I am sick, but was definitely able to, to make this important meeting. Um, I wanna thank the administration for being able to, to answer these questions. Um, and, you know, like Member Casianos said, you know, there's a lot of questions that, um, were touched upon that I do feel like could use, you know, a little bit more of, of an explanation. Um, I'm not gonna go through each and every question that I submitted. However, I do wanna urge the public, you know, publicly, that it is very important for you to go on and to be able to look at these questions that the committee has submitted, because we are advocating for you, and, you know, there are things that we agree upon, and we're trying to, um, you know, to respectfully, um, ask for consideration uh, in, in reviewing the budget a- again, and the things that we're able to pull funds for, and what positions are being cut, um, you know, as far as the SEL, um, I, I, I'm still, I agree with you, Member Casianos, in that regards. I'm, I'm still stuck on the fact that I feel like this district has such high needs for it, and these services are so needed, and understanding that we are in a, a, a financial, uh, you know, battle right now. Um, I, I still really wanna be able to find a way to keep these positions open, um, and, and not have these students impacted, unfortunately, by, by this budget being, being short. And also, I, I agree in regards to the deputy position. Um, I, I do strongly feel like we, we should keep that position closed, and we can allocate those funds elsewhere. Um, I, I think Member Dugan had some really good recommendations, and, you know, I do stand with, um, the recommendations that he had given, and, you know, I, I also wanna be able to give recommendations too, and, and, you know, I, I think we've kinda talked about saving those for the next meeting, and that's fine. Uh, but I did just wanna speak to let everyone know that, you know, I, I am here and I'm listening, and I submitted questions as well, and that we're all trying to work in the best interest of our students. And I just want us all to keep that mentality, because we, we don't have any ill intentions, and, um, I just wanna be able to do what's best for the, for the students, and these teachers also deserve, um, you know, the support and, and their positions to help, um, the impact that is, is gonna take place on these students. So, thank you, and, um, I just wanted to be able to say a couple things.
Thank, thank you, Member Sata White, thank you.
Can I just share?
Sure.
I, uh, thank you, Member Reed, for your insightful questions. You had a, you, you had a lot of, um, very specific questions that helped us to support a lot, you know, explanations for everyone to read, but specifically around CASA. Uh, question seven, which speaks on the cost so far this year. We were able to actually give a detailed, uh, number on that. And then, we also shared a chart that explains the positions where they're currently located, and moving to CASA means not necessarily that the teacher moves if they choose to move, but the position, anytime we decrease student enrollment in a building, and if it's not, you know, here, if you look at this, it's English, Classical, so it's sort of throughout, Marshall, Breed, Pickering, Fecto. So impact, it's a little bit from everyone, it's not a whole staff, but it may be two or three positions from each of the schools. And so, those going to CASA, if, if the, if CASA doesn't open, the positions stay where they are, and we continue to not be able to solve the problem of excessive students at English and Classical. So I ju- and Breed and Marshall, for the time being, until we can balance out with the new Pickering building, where we're anticipating that all three middle school populations would range in the, in the, about a thousand instead of over thirteen, fourteen hundred. So I just wanted to point out that those, there's two charts, uh, one for your question number seven, and one for your question number eight, that explain in detail how, um, the positions, if they're not at one school, they go to CASA versus, it's not like we opened up positions that never existed. So I wanted to point that out, and thank you for that question.
Can I just respond to that quickly? Thank you for that analysis, all of you, that was super helpful in visualizing it. I struggled with that and still kinda working through it. But, you know, I, I think there's also part of a, an issue with that, in terms of, like, when, when, and this was something I was gonna write you about, but since we're talking about it, I was gonna, this is part of the issue, is you're having less teachers in there at, for, for example, Classical or English, meaning that class sizes are being loaded to the max to thirty-two, or whatever the case may be. I understand department heads are now picking up some of that, uh, slack, but that's, that's the further concern that I was gonna make, which I, I'm grateful that, you know, it's not allowing, uh, you know, we don't have to open up a whole bunch of, you know, monetarily. But I, I think that's the other concern now we face, is that's the trade-off. Now you're gonna have bigger class sizes, which I think some people spoke to earlier, a- and, and that's sort of the thing I struggle with back and, back and forth, and how to alleviate that, because you're, you, you're fixing one problem, but you're, you're kind of causing another one at the same time, which, which is the worst of the two. But it's, it's, it's struggle, but I just wanted to say that, you don't have to respond, but I just wanted to say that. But thank you for the data, that was helpful, very helpful.
Any other questions? Yeah, Member Dugan.
Yeah, um, first of all, I just wanna, uh, thank the members in the conversation that's been going on, um, and, and the fact that, you know, we are working as a team here, and people are looking at other questions and my recommendations, so I do appreciate that, and, um, a little bit of an easier question, though, I, I'd forgotten, I just found it in my notes. Um, and you don't have to answer tonight, if you get back to me tomorrow, that's fine. A constituent had asked me about C-fourth movement, not that it's a bad thing, it's a good thing, but it's coming from a grant. Um, what grant is that coming from? And, and I apologize, this seems like a curveball, you know, we're not talking about that, but I wanted to make sure I got, 'cause it's constituent did ask me that. I'm gonna make sure I got the answer. Okay.
Could I, I think there was movement on that, let's let Mr. McHugh respond to that.
Thank you.
Or, or if you guys need to.
It's okay if you get back to me tomorrow, I can, yeah, yeah, okay.
It's Title One.
It's Title One.
It was paid this year by ARPA funds through the city.
Okay.
And since those funds run out, it'll be in the Title One budget next year.
Okay.
It's on the curriculum page under the non-salary.
Okay.
And on the far right-hand column, it said ARPA slash Title One, 'cause it was ARPA last year.
Right, so I think the question kinda revolved, which one is it gonna be?
It's Title One next year.
Thank you.
Member McGeeley.
Mr. McHugh, speaking about grants, um, my question I sent you today was that I noticed on the budget, there was no, like, under the grants, there's no listing of grants, but yet people are applying for grants. And you said that, can you explain why it's not listed on there under grants?
We, we list the salaries of folks, and there are just a few other items that are listed that we know that were, like, funded somewhere, because we are now haven't even started to apply, 'cause we have to see what our allocation's gonna be for next year's grants, so we don't know what those funds will be. So as far as, over the summer, the teams meet to say, this is what we're gonna put in Title One, that's not salary, like, contracts or things of that nature, so, and we don't get those awards until sometime in September, typically. So once we get those funds, then it's like, and then we know where it's actually gonna go. So right now, you know, I could, I'd be just guessing what's going where. But on the salaries, we always try to do the salary piece right up front, 'cause we wanna make sure we continue to fund those salaries.
The title's application does not typically get released until late spring, June. And then we work on it all summer, and we submit it typically by, uh, August, and then we get approval, um, usually in September.
Yeah.
So like MLE, uh, you know, I know that MLE has gotten a lot of grants this past year, or, um, innovations and grants.
Right.
They're getting a lot of.
A lot of those came after the fact.
They come afterwards.
Some of those even came in January, we got awarded money in January for some of those grants. So that's, you know, why the, and the, you know, it's typically not of people in those, some of those grants. MLE had some, but not anymore, you know, we're not sure what's gonna happen with those grants, so we don't have people in that grant next year for the MLE.
So how could the committee know what grants we got? You know, like, it's not in here.
We can give you a list of the grants, I mean, with the total amount.
Of, of this year's grants, and the spend down, basically what we have right now is what need, what needs to be spent down by June thirtieth, or when the grant expires. What we don't know in many cases right now is, will some of those same are requests for proposals for either Title Three, like, like Title One is categorical, Title Three is typically categorical, but a sat- most of it. But the rest, meaning, we submit, what are we doing with it? Um, but there are many competitions that will come outside, that, for example, Laura Sanchez applied for and obtained, and in one case, I think it was like a little over five hundred thousand dollars, and how she supported teachers in getting, right, like, fur- further certifications and do- So all of those things are, um, not necessarily consistent, and also happen at different times of the year. So we can't say it's gonna happen in September. Some of them may be put out in November, January, March, it just depends on the state funding.
So maybe we should get a list of the grants that we have gotten.
I do believe we provided one, um, in the fall.
We can send you an updated one for this year, you know, we don't know what FY-
At the end of the year, like, we'll know what we spent all year?
Well, it's in, well, it's, it won't give you the break, well, it's very difficult to give you the breakout within everything. It's typically salaries, stipends, contracted services, and things of that nature, and supplies. It's kinda like a category, so I mean, to get into, it'd be a lot of work to pull out all the details, what they actually purchased through everything. But most of these grants are like professional development for teachers and things of that nature. A lot of them, that's what we do, you know, the curriculum department runs a lot of those things, and we put them through those grants so that we can bring people in, or do something outside. Like, sometimes we even do some of the summer school through those grants and things of that nature, so to, to pay for our staff on that. But that's not like a salary, that's just additional hours. But we can give you a breakout of, like, the total amounts and some of those categories within each one, so you at least see what, what's going on from that level.
Great.
Okay?
Okay, good.
Any other questions? Um, I just wanna say thank you to all the members for the, all the, the questions and, and discussion tonight, as well as all the folks who have weighed in on, and opened comment, and, and emailed and called, and, and sent their, um, comments and questions, as well as the, the administration for all the work that's gone into preparing the budget and to, um, answering these questions, and, and, and all the deliberation that, that's happening. Um, I really appreciate it. I think, um, you know, we're, we're, we're best served when we, when we air these issues and, and have discussions about them, and we're gonna continue to do that, we're not, we're not, we're not done yet. Um, we've, I think we've covered a lot of ground over the last few months in terms of, um, understanding where we are and where we wanna go, and, uh, uh, we have another couple weeks to get to the final, um, uh, budget approval. The next meeting, uh, we, we, we have the public hearing, and so folks, um, can, um, still have opportunity to, to submit feedback, uh, through that formal process. Um, and then, I think, uh, to the extent that members have additional, uh, questions or, or recommendations, they can continue to, um, correspond with the administration about that in, 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 in the coming weeks, so, thank you all. Communications?
Yes, so there's actually, I think there's one other, um, just to share. The social studies, there, we had a question last meeting about whether it was on the record, so we included in your pockets the minutes from that meeting. Um, so there was no vote needed for that portion, I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. And then, um, lastly, as we close out the month of May and prepare for the final stretch of the school year, I do wanna take a moment to reflect, express my deep gratitude for the incredible resilience and dedication shown by our community. It's, uh, has been true to our spirit of inclusivity to celebrate heritage, culture, and identity in our schools. May has been a vibrant month in our schools, where we've honored diverse heritage and cultural traditions that make up the LPS family. Throughout the month, our students and staff celebrated Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month with classroom learning performances and community storytelling that recognize the contributions and resilience of our AAPI communities. Our Jewish American History Month, which also invited us to learn, uh, from and honor the deep historical and cultural impact of Jewish Americans, including reflections of perseverance, justice, and civic responsibility. It was also Haitian Heritage Month, which displays music, student-led presentations, and highlighted pride, history, and the strength of our Haitian American students and community. Um, and of course, lastly, our Mental Health Awareness Month, reinforcing our commitment to safe, inclusive, and supportive learning environments for all students. The inclusivity summit was this evening, um, and we were sorry to miss it. These events are more than celebrations, they are powerful reminders that identity matters, representation matters, um, and belonging is the foundation for learning. Uh, when we looked at that data this evening, and as Dr. Shorter spoke about those Ls, um, visiting classrooms and seeing students that are newcomers in our classrooms, from the youngest learners, um, through those high school students, visiting SLIF classrooms, it really provides us an understanding, and, um, I think we all try very hard to sit in the shoes of students, but it, it is difficult, right, for us to sometimes do that when we haven't experienced ourselves, when we haven't been an English language learner. Um, I have deep appreciation for the work that teachers are doing with our L students. I, I commend our educators and school leaders for ensuring that all students see themselves reflected in our curriculum, activities, and community dialogue. This spring, we have weathered a deficit, uh, difficult budget season marked by tough decisions and constrained resources. I wanna thank every member of LPS family, teachers, staff, families, um, union partners, and city leaders for your collaboration and your grace under pressure. We continue to confront these challenges head-on, and we didn't turn on each other, we turned on the problem and the deficit. That's what professionalism, leadership, and shared purpose look like. I'm proud that our district maintained focus on equity and direct student support, even amidst difficult financial circumstances. Solving problems requires truth, creativity, collective resolve, and not blame. One of the clearest messages we heard this year from all members of the community, especially from the teacher cabinet, was the urgent need to address overcrowding at all levels, and especially at the secondary level. I wanna share a few key updates on the efforts we're making to respond. And I know, uh, the presentation earlier touched upon these, but we wanna emphasize that we are proud that LinTech will offer approximately sixty new seats next year, with potentially seventy-five more the following year. That's a ten percent increase, um, in the student population over two years. At FTCA, we're looking at an expansion of two hundred and thirty-five seats this year to four hundred and forty-six total in the fall, uh, as well as six twenty-five the following year. That's a hundred and sixty-six percent increase. That's unprecedented, unprecedented expansion of high-quality learning opportunities. And with CASA, we would welcome three hundred students that would add an additional grade each year. That, as a result, would project student population decreases in the following schools next year. Classical, approximately seven point four percent, English, nine percent, Marshall, seven point five percent, Breed, five point three percent, and further reductions in twenty-six to twenty-seven, which would leave Classical at fourteen percent less students, and English at twelve point eight less students. This strategic reallocation of student seats by design responds directly to capacity challenges and instructional space concerns that the community has been voicing for minimally a decade. It also reflects our long-term vision to create more personalized, global learner approach and future-ready pathways for all students. As we work with Mayor Nicholson and our esteemed state delegation, we remain hopeful that MSBA will revise its application process to allow for more flexible and concurrent capital projects. Such changes would enable Lynn to modernize- Such changes would enable Lynn to modernize multiple buildings simultaneously, something our students urgently need and deserve. In the meantime, we must all continue to be leaders in our community by using every available resource to ensure that all students in Lynn have access to high-quality learning environments that reflect our values of equity, opportunity, and excellence. Thank you all for your ongoing partnership together as we navigate these challenges, building solutions, and creating a stronger future for every student in the city.
Thank you so much. Yeah, Member Reed.
Can I say something real quick?
Yeah.
Um, I just wanna say this is Sheila O'Neill's last official meeting as Union President, I know she'll be here still, but...
Congratulations, Sheila.
It's gonna be weird looking over there, not seeing her.
I know.
Congratulations, yeah.
I don't know, she's offered some opportunities to...
Oh, boy.
Come back, so...
Oh, she'll be back. Motion to adjourn.
Hold on, I got a quick announcement, um, just a reminder, on Monday at ten AM, I, I hope any one who's around can join us at the unveiling of John Hoffman Way, we talked about extracurriculars, what a, what a great way to honor someone who's provided some special moments for our students, uh, so please join us on, on Monday at ten.
Yeah, and I hope you can make it.
I'll be there.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?